Do you want to, do you want to, have you got a recorder?
Well, I have my phone. I could, I don't know if I know how to turn this thing on.
Okay.
Thank you for being here. I'd like to open the study session for the City Council for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for September 17, 2018. We will start our meeting with citizen comment on any agenda items. And I have a sign up sheet here and we'll go down the list. Robert Robinson first up and Jan Rose on deck. And if when you come to, if you would come up to speak, come to the podium, give us your first name and last name, if you'd spell your last name for us so we get it on the record, and give us an address.
Good evening. My name's Rob Robinson, R-O-B-I-N-S-O-N. I live at 4 Hillside Drive. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to talk about the budget. Should point out first that I am a member of the Wheat Ridge Environmental Sustainability Committee, but I'm here today that to really represent myself. The things I have to say have not been discussed with the rest of the committee. I'm not representing the committee. So I did take a look at the budget and also the summary that's in the agenda for this evening. And I was quite disappointed. There's nothing in the budget that reflects the work that the committee did. Yes, there are some environmental things. There's continuation of the volunteer tree plantings, an energy audit of the rec center, continuation of the open space program. All those things are environmental in nature. But in this budget, the city has not upped its game towards environmental sustainability. Or as the Ridge 2035 Vision calls it, environmental stewardship. And I'm particularly disappointed because we have spent the last year, the committee has a meeting twice a week. We've had presentations from several of the directors of the department heads here whom we're very impressed with. They're all very savvy on environmental issues. In some ways, you probably didn't need the committee. Could have asked them because many of the suggestions that we incorporated in our, in our recommendations came from the city staff. And yet, we had all those meetings. We had a representative from the city sitting in on all our meetings, presumably the communication between ourselves and the city. We gave the city council three presentations. The last one was in June. And yet, none of this has bubbled up in this budget. I would urge you, now that you've got this proposed budget, to strongly consider other things that we suggested. After all, I don't have, I'm just repeating something you all know. Perhaps we're facing significant environmental risks, floods, fire, and drought. Floods and drought at the same time. And I recommend that you at least, perhaps think of it as the investment on the part of the city like an insurance policy. We all have, most of us, I guess, have insurance on our car, insurance on our house. None of us really expect our house to burn down or to have a car wreck, but we have that insurance anyway. And whether you believe in some of these issues or not, it's a small price to pay to invest in some environmental sustainability. And there's a payoff, some significant improvements in the cost of the city for some, some of the services, for the livability of the city, and so on. So as you deliberate the budget in the next few weeks, strongly urge you to take some of the recommendations, more than just a trivial measure towards accepting some of the recommendations of the committee and some of the ideas of the staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jan Rose and Rachel Hulteen on deck.
Hi, my name is Jan Rose, like the flower. I live at 10221 West 38th Ave, across from Morningstar. I canceled an appointment that I was going to meet today with the City of Golden that's been on my calendar for quite some time, but the budget got released and I looked at Wheat Ridge's and compared to Golden, and I felt compelled to cancel that one and come here. How many people know what Golden is celebrating today?
No.
Today is the 10th year of their sustainability goals in the City of Golden. Here's what they're offering their constituency. Let's talk trash and find out what new items can be thrown in your single stream recycling bin. Let's find out the biggest water conservation that you can implement. Hint: It's not inside. See the alternative transportation options available. Now is the time to have a say in the future of Golden's resiliency and climate adaptation. So you've got Golden, you've got Lakewood, you've got Arvada, you've got Denver. You are literally surrounded by cities who have taken major steps towards sustainability and resilience goals. They benefit us, your citizens, your constituents. They benefit you, they benefit your children. Denver has a plan for any commercial building over 20,000 square feet has to have a green roof or solar panels. A year ago, you had a billion dollar storm damage from the hailstorm. I have solar panels on my roof. I didn't get a new roof. Solar panels are engineered to withstand the softball sized hail. Of the 3,000 panels on the roof of Enrel, one cracked in last year's hailstorm. One out of 3,000. You watched what happened with Colorado Mills last year and how they closed down for almost nine months, cost the city a tremendous amount of sales tax revenue. If you had mandated in the city code that the Clear Creek Crossing development have solar panels on their roof, not only would they be a net positive for the city, they wouldn't shut down for our annual hailstorm and cost us millions of dollars in tax revenue. So I would like you to really seriously consider that with all of these new condos and rental units going in by Ward Road, the G line, and going in on Colfax where the W line is, et cetera, if you mandate charging stations so that you can encourage renters to invest in electric cars, if you can pick a single trash company. I live at 38th and Lee. I watch eight different companies roll by my house between Wednesday and Friday, tearing up the roads, spewing a bunch of diesel. It's nuts. I belong to both Applewood neighborhood and Wheat Ridge neighbors, and I watch the constant stream of, "I hate my trash company. Who's a good trash company?" We could save a lot of money and a lot of pollution if we just pick a trash company. We could create a community garden if we start a methane, a composting facility for our city. We could open up the fields right next to the Wheat Ridge Rec Center behind my house, put in a community solar garden for all those apartments over there on 44th. Do you know that because of my solar panels, Xcel Energy pays me at the end of every year? Thank you. I would really like to suggest that you reconsider some of the money. Not only can you pass it on in zoning fees and permit charges, but you can set a standard that matches the cities that are all the way around you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Hulteen with Joe Demott on deck.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Rachel Hulteen and I live at 4690 Balsam Street. And I'm here this evening to give some input on the budget. I read all 254 pages of it. No, I didn't. But I did take a really good look at it, and I think there's a lot in the budget to be excited about in the year ahead. And I'm excited about the priorities that council has set forth that you guys have decided are important to you. And I think that they are, for the most part, aligning with, you know, where we are as a city today and the direction we want to go. One of the initiatives that I've been really involved in is Activate 38. It's a three-year grant through Kaiser Permanente to local works to improve walking, biking, and rolling on 38th Avenue. We have a lot of 38th Avenue in the city, and this is 38th Avenue west of Kipling. That particular stretch of 38th Avenue is really hostile for people who are walking and riding bikes and connecting with transit. In that corridor, due to transportation limitations, there are no alternatives. There's no north connector to 44th Avenue, so you're forced to travel on 38th. There are limited southern connectors to 32nd, and there's really no east-west alternative. This forces a lot of that community who depends on walking and biking and wheelchair rolling to connect with transit, community services, recreation, and just have social life. I've talked to a lot of teenagers that, you know, they like to get around the community and their families won't let them walk or ride their bikes on 38th Avenue because it's too dangerous. The grant is looking at longer-term solutions, and we recognize the corridor has significant challenges, including drainage. But what we'd really like to do is work with the city in 2019 to address a couple of spot priorities that have actually been identified by the corridor, people who live on the corridor and work on the corridor. And those include putting in some speed checker signs to help slow down cars. Slowing down cars was the number one priority identified by the community last year. The second recommendation by the community was to refresh the existing crosswalks to raise awareness of where pedestrians might be safely crossing. And then another priority that the community has set forth, excuse me, is highlighting alternative routes that do exist, such as 35th Avenue from Parfitt East as well as 38th Place. So doing some signage to help encourage people to take those safer alternative routes. So while there's no specific funds earmarked in the budget, we hope to work with the city either through the budgeting process or moving forward into 2019 to make sure that some of these quick wins that address safety conditions today happen so that the community feels that it's a safer place to walk, ride, and roll. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joe Demott.
Hi all, I'm Joe Demott, D-E capital M-O-T-T. I'm here to talk to you about the Carnation Festival and the Wheat Ridge Business District, two things on your budget. I was made aware that I, it was too late to submit in writing any increases that we were requesting, so thought I'd come ask you right now. Our Carnation Festival, this will be our 50th year as we celebrate the 50th year of the City of Wheat Ridge. And I know you have several things on the budget that we have to celebrate that. But along with our 50th celebration, we also have improvements at Anderson Park this year. There'll be twice as much everything, we hope. It should align really well with the Carnation Festival, and we're very excited. We have a lot of actually new board members this year who are coming to plan with us and had great, great response from the community, great help from the police department, the parks department, public works. I absolutely cannot say enough about what they do for us, and I hope we don't make it too long a weekend for them. I know some of them are there in the middle of the night with us, and we appreciate it. So you're always generous to give us $80,000 the last couple of years, and we were hoping for an increase for this year. There'll be two stages this year. It'll be a gazebo stage. We'll still keep the main stage up front. We have, each year, our donations are, our reimbursement for work is what it is. We can call it a donation, but it's all the hard work of the optimists, the rotary, the kowanis, the kids from the high school, the football players, the cheerleaders, the Palms. We have 17 different service organizations and organizations that benefit from the Carnation Festival. We want to make sure that they continue to get reimbursed for their hard work as well as make this year even better to celebrate. You know, we have a free, free show, some free event, some things people pay for, but we want to keep those costs down. I've got a budget here, a profit and loss, not a budget, but I printed exactly enough for everybody, so somebody's going to have to share if I have to keep one to answer questions. But I'll be here to answer. And our Wheat Ridge Business District, there is a line item in your budget now under local works for the Wheat Ridge Business District. I believe they're asking for an additional $30,000. That came from our, do I have 30 seconds? We have, oh. Our facade plus program was a big success, Raphael's Hair Studio and Post Oak Hall finished projects. They each received $20,000, and they each ended up spending over 126, I think, apiece. 126 was the lowest they spent. I can answer questions. I could even forward you some pictures on that if you'd like, and I'm here to answer questions. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. That's all the people that I have signed up to speak tonight from the public. Is there anyone here who hasn't signed up who would like to speak? You may do so at this time. Okay, I don't see anyone, so we will move to our first order of business, the Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant.
Chief Brennan is here to give explanation.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor and Patrick. Just a quick overview, annually, the police department receives a justice assistance grant through the Bureau of Justice Administration. This grant, if you review the staff report, can be used actually in about 24 topical areas. I've condensed those into some of the major sections that are contained within the guidelines for the grant. This year, we received a grant in the amount of $10,095. That grant amount is determined by a funding formula that BGA uses that looks at population and Part I crime. So that's how they come up with that figure. Bigger jurisdictions that have more violent crime tend to get, tend to get more dollars. And we've consistently been in that $10,000 to $12,000 range that we receive annually. We've used that money specifically for either law enforcement programs, so community policing, crime prevention initiatives, and we've also used it to procure equipment and technology that we've needed. Last year, we decided that with, with, you know, your input, to use the $10,178 that we received to purchase a mobile automated license plate reader, we were going to use funding out of our police seizure fund, Fund 17, to purchase a trailer that we could move around to hotspots in the community and put that trailer up and utilize it to try to find stolen, stolen vehicles, people who are wanted, those kinds of things. Unfortunately, because of grant conditions that were put in that particular grant, there was a injunction filed by, a request for an injunction filed by several larger cities based on special conditions that were in that award that were specific to the current administration that we have. Those, that put a freeze on all those grant dollars, and those conditions were subsequently removed. And here, within the last month, that $10,178 was, was released, and our time period to spend that money was, was increased. The thing that has changed that we wanted to look at this year was the types of personal protection equipment that we issue our officers. For instance, every officer has what we call soft body armor that they wear that's rated at generally a level two or two A, so it'll stop, you know, most handgun rounds. But in light of what we've seen both nationally and locally with fatal encounters involving, you know, heavily armored and armed suspects, we had three police shootings, fatal police shootings that started in New Year's Eve in 2017 through the month of February. We lost three deputies. We had a Colorado Springs officer who was in a deadly encounter three weeks ago who was shot and critically wounded and now is in a recovery mode. Colorado unfortunately also has, you know, the history of not only high school shootings, fatal high school shootings, but a theater shooting. And in Colorado Springs, just a couple of years ago, at the Planned Parenthood location, we had a heavily armed suspect that got inside a building and wounded and killed many people. So I asked the question after the first of the year, after we saw the first fatal law enforcement officer death, what kind of protective equipment do our officers have? How are they, they equipped if we were ever to have a call for service that involved, you know, a heavily armed suspect or suspects? What would we have? We certainly know our SWAT team is equipped with ballistic helmets and ballistic shields, and they have the, you know, the heavier tactical vests, you know, that will help stop rifle rounds. What do our officers, our real true first responders have? And the answer was that the last time this organization spent any money on police protective equipment beyond the soft body armor that we issue was in the early 2000s. Most of that equipment is, is old, it's no longer functional, and has been, just because of wear and tear, sitting in the back of the vehicles, is, is not even available to officers. So we did a project to, a research project to look at what it would cost to purchase equipment for 50 officers. So we currently have 59 officers and supervisors assigned to patrol function. Seven of those officers are already assigned to the SWAT team, so they have the ballistic helmets, the, the heavier level four ballistic plates, and the tactical carriers to, you know, so that they can carry that kind of equipment. We figured it was going to cost about $890, I think is the figure, per officer to equip them with ballistic helmets, the tactical vests, and the plate carriers that would go inside the vest. And when you do the math on that, it comes out to around $42,000 to equip all those officers. So from a Bureau of Justice Administration perspective, there are a couple of things that, that will, you know, I need your consensus to move forward on. The first is to reappropriate the $10,178 from last year's grant to, to this purpose. And, and then, you know, your consensus to use the $10,075 for that purpose, and that'll give us right about $21,000. I also have about $60,000 in our police asset forfeiture, Fund 17 account, and we would use the remainder of, we would, we would use that to pay for the remainder of the balance to equip all of our patrol officers with, with personal protective equipment above and beyond the soft body armor that they carry. BGA requires that, that, you know, we notify our council, our elected officials, of the purpose of the grant, and they also require us to notify the public of what we wish to spend that money on. So we have done a media release, we have on our city website, we've posted on our Facebook page this study session tonight for anybody who wishes to provide input to us. And the other requirement is just consensus from our elected officials to move forward in this direction. We'll repurpose the money from 2017 and then use the money from 2018 to start the process, the bidding process, purchase, bid process to purchase this equipment. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have questions of council for Chief Brennan? Mr. Matthews?
Just, this hasn't shown up in our budget, and I think you said things just changed, but would that be, I'm looking at page 276, it's the police budget, and under that item, under line item 730, uniforms and protective clothing, is that where you would be putting that?
No, no, it would be under grants, it would be under 202. These are grant funds. That, that is our regular budget for uniforms and soft body armor.
Okay, let me see if I can find that. Additional questions? Ms. Hoppe.
So Chief, but what you're saying to us is that through Fund 17 and then this grant, those monies combined is enough money to cover the cost for the new PPE for the officers?
Yes, it'd all be grant funding and police seizure money that would, would be utilized.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Ms. Hoppe.
I don't see anybody else's hands going up, so I would just like to try to make a consensus to move forward for the, to approve the use of the JAG funds to purchase the police protective equipment.
Do we have consensus there? Chief, there's your answer.
Thank you.
Looks like unanimous vote. Thank you for this presentation. We will move on to item number two, which is a presentation of the 2019 budget. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have in front of you a handout of the presentation, so you can follow that, or we'll have it up on the screen also. So if you have any questions during the presentation that will help you maybe clarify something, please, please ask that so you can understand what's, what's being said. But if you could leave most of your policy related questions to the end, I think that might be more efficient, if that's okay with everybody. And then we also have our department directors here to help answer questions too when you're ready. So 2019 proposed budget, 50 years strong, as, as Mr. Demott mentioned, we're celebrating 50 years here next year. So proud accomplishment of this community. Next slide, please. I always like to show this, this slide quickly. The city received this again in 2018 for the 2018 year budget. The city receives this award because our budget document reflects both the guidelines established by the National Advisory Council on state and local budgeting, but also the Government Finance Officers Association best practices on budgeting. So you can thank Heather Geier and staff for that, making sure that we get that every year. And then the Wheat Ridge Vision 2035. I know you all know this by heart, but I always like to read this every budget cycle just because this is, this is why we're doing what we're doing. And this was put together by you and previous councils. It's usually tweaked every council, but this is our current vision. Wheat Ridge is an attractive and inviting city and community for families. Wheat Ridge has great neighborhoods, is a hub of commerce with a choice of economically viable commercial areas, and has diverse transportation. Wheat Ridge is committed to environmental stewardship, and its residents enjoy an active, healthy lifestyle and are proud of their hometown. We urge a great place to live, work, and play. So diving right into the budget, just to give you this quick overview, I showed this slide last year too, but there's really four main categories of funds that we have in our budget. And the biggest one is, is our general fund operating budget. That is our daily budget where we make most, most of our expenses come out of that budget. And then, then we have eight special funds, and we'll go through all these in more detail later, but eight special funds is a public art fund, police investigation fund, open space, municipal court, conservation trust, equipment replacement, crime prevention, and recreation center fund. Some of those are set up by, by law, they have to be, revenues and expenses have to be tracked in separate funds, and some are just done for more budget convenience. The third category is our capital improvement. The third category is our capital improvement program budget and that's where most of our large capital infrastructure, street projects, drainage projects and such are, are put in, into that, that budget for that fund. And then what's new for the last couple of years is our bond fund, the 2E fund we call it, investing for the future fund, you may, you may hear us call it too also and that, that tracks the revenues and expenses from the 2E sales tax increase. The next slide, there's, there's a lot of numbers on here, but we'll go into all these in more detail, but I just, I kind of wanted to show this because this shows kind of the breakdown of the total budget and then what portion of the 2E fund that, budget that is because it's a large portion of it. If you look at the column on the, on the clear right and several rows down, the proposed expenditures for all funds next year is just over 75 million. If you go a little bit left on that, in that same row, all other funds, all other funds minus the 2E fund is 53 million of that. The 2E fund alone is, is just over 22 million. So although we have a, a large budget of 75 million, 53 million is primarily the general operations and 22 is that 2E bond fund. And this is just a graphical representation of that same chart that shows you how those expenditures are broken down. So again, our general operating budget again is the largest budget or the largest portion of that 75 million and that's 40%. And then 2E bond fund is next at 30%. And I broke out some of the other funds because a couple of them are bigger than the others, but the CIP budget is 14%, open space budget is 5%, recreation center is 3% and the other five, I guess, funds that are left over are only 1% of that total, so they're pretty small. So just focusing on the general fund now, that 47% of that 75 million. In 2019, we're projecting about $35 million, 35 and a half million dollars in revenues. We're projecting to have a, a fund balance at the beginning of next year of just over 13 million, so total available funds of 48.8 million for 2019. The revenues are about a 1.5% increase compared to what we're estimating to bring in at the end of this year, but it's a 3.8% increase compared to what we originally budgeted in the 2018 budget. So a little bit of increase in revenues for the general fund. Again, broken down graphically, I think you all know and understand, we, we kind of drill this into you every year and, and to our citizens that sales and use taxes is a primary revenue source for the city. So over 70% is, of our revenues come from sales and use tax. And a little piece of that pie I always like to point out too, because a lot of people don't know, is property tax is only 3% of our revenue, so very small revenue source. And then there's, there's several other different categories there. All these revenues are broken down under the tab in your book, revenues and expenditures. So if you have any questions about them, you can look in there or we can ask, answer those questions for you. So this is a new slide I started last year, this is just a financial health of the city graph set post recession, so about 2009-ish. Some will argue that maybe the recession wasn't quite over yet, but that's kind of when it started ticking back up. And you can see here, it took a couple of years for the city to really start seeing growth in revenues. 2013 was really the first year that we kind of saw a significant increase, a little bump in, in revenues and then they've been increasing every year since. And so the green line is, is the, the ongoing revenues that we receive on an annual basis and then the, the orange bar on top are some one-time revenues that we, we get on an annual base or that we project to get annually depending on what year it is. 2019, we're, we have some one-time revenues we're projecting, still getting, believe it or not, some money, insurance proceeds for, for the hailstorm are estimated about 570,000 still coming in in 2019. And let's see what else, I guess that's, that's really it for 2019 for the one-time revenues that we're projecting, but fairly good growth in revenues at least since 2013. And the next slide, if I can get to it. So general, again, focusing on general fund, these are expenditures that we're proposing. Again, just over 35 and a half million, so we're presenting a balanced budget. We put together a budget that matches the revenues that we project to come in for 2019, so not taking any money out of reserves to balance the general fund budget. We are though taking, proposing to take 4 million out of the general fund reserves as transfers to other funds. 3 million of that is to the CIP capital project budget, 900,000 to the open space for the Green Project on 38th Avenue and 100,000 to our equipment replacement fund. That's a fund we set up to save money so that we have money set aside for large equipment replaces, replacements over the years such as police radios or large, now that we don't have a dispatch center. That was kind of one, I think one of the first reasons we set that up is we, we knew we were going to have some very large expenses coming up for our communication center, millions of dollars to replace our communication center, but we won't have that expense anymore. But financial management software system for the city is, is hundreds of thousands of dollars, so that's what that fund is set up for. We usually put about 100,000 in that a year. Expenditures are about a 1.2% increase compared to the 2018 budget. If you factor out the hailstorm expenses both in 2018 and 2019, it's about a 3.5% increase. This will leave us with a ending fund balance of 9.3 million and the unrestricted portion of that is about 6.9 million, which is a 19.4% fund balance. What's in that restricted portion of that fund balance is just over a million dollars for the Tabor 3% reserve, emergency reserve that, that we required to hold back, 248,000 for PEG fees, public education government fees that we collect for this system in here, camera system. And then 1,850,000 for the loan to Fruitdale that we still have outstanding. If you remember, we got, we did get repaid 1.5 million this year, but we still have, the city has 1,850,000 left on that loan, so that's part of our restricted fund balance. So again, that leaves an unrestricted of about 6.9, which city council can choose to use at their discretion. Down to 17%. So 2019 general fund expenditures graphically here, I don't think this chart changes ever. It's always about the same, police department is always about 30%. Parks and public works are always about tied, 15 to 14%. Administrative services, all of our internal functions are, are 12%. Central charges is all of our general fund employee, health and medical benefits, our workers comp insurance, our property liability insurance and some other charges that cross every departments in the city. General government is, is city council budget, city manager, city attorney, city clerk, city treasurer, economic development at 9% and then community development 5% and municipal court, 3%. Yeah, cheap side of the table over here, I heard. And this is a similar display for revenues, this is expenditures, again, kind of a fiscal health model, again, post recession, 2009-ish. You can see, again, some one-time expenditures in 14 through 2019. A lot of those are for different purposes, most recently in 2019, we're projecting that those are, let's see, got my notes here. 2000, whoops. Yeah, 2019 is just under a million dollars of hailstorm repairs we still have to do in, in 2019 and we have about $665,000 worth of TIP payments for some of our different projects. Those are all one-time expenses. But as you can see, revenues or expense, expenses have increased obviously over the years. Since 2009, over 12 million dollars. Over that same period, cumulative inflation was about 20%, so that's about 4, 4.6 million dollars of that increase, 4.6 million. We've, we've increased staffing, about 23 FTEs over that time period. We've had significant increase in economic development activity over those years also. Those are some of the reasons for that increase. So that was the general fund, moving on to some of the other funds now. This is the, the 2E fund. We are projecting available funds in 2019 of just over 33 million dollars and expenditures of 22 million. And the projects, we'll get into a little bit more detail here what they are, but for 2019, the largest expenses we're projecting are for the Gold Line Station, 37% of that 22 million is for, for that project, 23% for the, the hook ramps at the Clear Creek Crossing project, 13% for the Wadsworth project, 11% for Anderson Park and 16% for debt service. And you can see the debt service payment for 2019 is, is just under 3.5 million dollars. So those projects, as you all know, again, Clear Creek Crossing hook ramps, we have 5 million budgeted next year for that. Scott, did you want to kind of give a quick update maybe on those expenses, the hook ramp expenses?
Sure, yeah, yeah. Clear Creek Crossing for the hook ramp, hook ramp, um, hook ramp expenses, sorry, I'm a little jet lagged here. This basically covers the infrastructure roadway work needed to complete the hook ramps and reconfigure the access between I-70 and 32nd Avenue. And that's basically the extension of what we call Clear Creek or Cabela's, it says Cabela's Drive on the, on the map, but we're calling that Clear Creek Crossing Drive from 32nd up to where the hook, hook ramps are going to start, then the hook ramps and then that includes some redoing the existing interchange at 32nd and I-70 with, with the ramps there. I can get into more detail on that if there's questions, but that's, that's the basics of the 2E expenditures on Clear Creek Crossing. For the G Line Station, it's...
Scott, Ken's going to go over that, I think he's all prepared, but thank you.
Not at all, Scott.
Giving you a break. So the Wheat Ridge Ward G Line Station, again, we're projecting to spend 8.3 million, I'll let Ken explain that.
Yeah, we, we have been at a staff level meeting monthly for quite some time now and among other things prioritizing which projects might make the most sense for the city to fund through 2E. I think for the, for the funds in next year's budget, those are mostly road projects, so improvements to 52nd Avenue, which is a high priority, improvements to Ridge Road, potentially over to Ward Road and then extending to the city's eastern boundary. And then also improvements to Tabor Street. So that's about 6.3 million of that 8.3 million amount. And then 1.3 million is designing those projects and about 750,000 is acquiring right-of-way for those projects. That'll leave a little over 4 million left and still obviously looking for opportunities to leverage that with other grants and other funding sources to maximize, maximize that money. The, just while we're giving an update on that, the, you know, we're certainly in active communications with both the property owners where the potential regional park associated with the ponds were located on the vision plan. We don't have partnerships to, for those to become regional parks at this point, doesn't mean there might not be significant opportunities to make them regional amenities and take advantage of the water asset, but maybe in partnership with them as private development occurs. Still looking at the pedestrian bridge and linear park and that's really what we're reserving the balance of the money for. And we have AECom under contract to start that design and, and preliminary budgeting work as we speak.
Great, thanks, Ken. And then the final two 2E projects on the next slide are the Wadsworth Boulevard widening project. That's 7 million dollars come from the 2E fund and about 3 million we have budgeted for next year. And Scott can give you a brief update on that if you would?
Sure. The, the 2E money we have for the Wadsworth Boulevard project is to cover that gap that we have with funding the project. As you may recall, we have 25 million dollars in federal TIP funds. C-DOT is making some contributions, we've cobbled together some other funding sources, but still had a, you know, a gap, 10 million or 7 million dollar gap left from, you know, after going through the, the PEL and the EA and so forth and getting the design itself a little more, more in focus here. So in the coming year here, we'll be using funds to, this gets into the CIP part of it a little more, but we'll be wrapping up the environmental assessment, starting the final design for the project and then also beginning the process for right-of-way acquisition.
Thanks, Scott. And then the final and fourth project under 2E fund is Anderson Park reconstruction and you approved that contract last week, I believe, right? Joyce, do you have any quick updates on that or you just gave an update last week, so may not have much to add?
All right, then I won't go through all of the renovations we're doing in Anderson Park since we did cover that last week, but just want to invite you to the Anderson Demo Day Wednesday morning at 10:30 and come and get a sledgehammer and help knock one of the walls down. So we're excited to get started, they are down there already working, working on stormwater management and et cetera.
Great, thank you. Then moving on to another fund, the capital improvement program funds, we are projecting expenditures of about 10 and a half million, revenues of about the same and we are proposing, as I mentioned earlier, to transfer 3 million dollars from general fund reserves to the CIP budget to help with, with these expenditures and that's up quite a bit. We normally transfer anywhere from 2 and 2.5 million, so we've had some additional funds that we were able to transfer, so it's, it's enabling us to get quite a few more capital projects done, which Scott can talk about in a bit. But this graph here just shows you what the majority of that funding is going towards and for 19, it's, it's again, the Wadsworth construction, so 65% of the budget is going towards that. And then we have other street projects is the next largest at 7.4% but then, what, I'm sorry, preventative street maintenance, our annual asphalt overlay and concrete repair and slurry seal program is about 19%. And then we have other street projects, some municipal capital projects, drainage, facilities, traffic, economic development and utility projects, which we'll talk about in more detail here in a bit. And just another fiscal health chart, this is specifically on the CIP budget, this just kind of, I like how this visually shows kind of the sporadic nature of the CIP budget based on project needs and, and actually budget. The, the green portion of the bar is the budget for that year for the CIP and the orange again is, is, is the transfers from the, the general fund. So we've been able to give more depending on the year and also we've been able to do more depending on the number of grants we've received for CIP projects and we've received quite a few over the years. So now on to some of the CIP major projects and I'll let Scott run through these and, and anybody else that has a project in CIP budget can jump in.
Yeah, I'll just run through these real quickly. These first three you see up here, Wadsworth Environmental Assessment, I just mentioned briefly, those monies will also be used to do the final design, construction plans and then also start right-of-way acquisition. 1.9 million preventive street, street maintenance, that amount is pretty consistent with what we've budgeted each year under this roughly around 2 million, 2 million dollars give or take, which includes our mill and overlay projects, slurry seal and crack filling. Bridge maintenance, we broke this out into a, kind of a new separate item on its own for this year. In the past, we've typically lumped expenditures with this in with our preventive maintenance project, but with our bridge inspection program, which happens once every two years, we're trying to be a little more deliberate and intentional about getting some of these maintenance needs on the bridges done proactively and spending a little bit more money projecting and have broke that out in a separate item. So, so we're, we're, that'll be a lot of mostly updates to some of the joints in the bridges, you know, repairing concrete spalling, some railings, those kinds of things, nothing major, but preventive maintenance we do need to do on the bridges. Next slide here. City Hall improvements, those are funds resulting from the risk assessment that was done by our consultant, the... our consultant that did a security assessment. If you want to expand on that, Joyce, at all.
So we have some space planning and security recommendations that are budgeted for 2019 to improve the security for walk-in traffic on both the first and second floor.
There's also the court security upgrades is in that budget, and some improvements to the sidewalks outside of City Hall, specifically on the police department side to repair cracks and trip hazards.
Okay, moving on, miscellaneous drainage improvements. This is a budget we typically have every year for pretty close to this amount. This year, the biggest, or next year in 2019, the larger of the projects will be at 26th and Fenton, a joint project with the city of Edgewater to do some improvements there where we've had some drainage issues. We also use money from this fund to do, you know, miscellaneous upgrades to our system. Say we have failing culverts and ones that are large enough or more complex enough that our maintenance ops folks cannot fix. Typically, they do these kinds of things when they can, but this provides some additional monies to contract work out if we need to do that. Clear Creek Crossing, the amount there, this is mainly for support services related to Clear Creek Crossing that are not 2E-related. There are going to be some streets built in the project, drainage improvement, storm sewer and so forth, that will be owned and maintained by the city. So therefore, we need to make sure that everything is reviewed and constructed appropriately, inspected. So these are some extra monies for that. And then the sidewalk gaps, bicycle pedestrian enhancements for $100,000. A lot of these are related to development, where we have developments going on, and it provides an opportunity where the city can leverage some funds to do additional improvements where we can plug up or close sidewalk gaps and do some other improvements. Moving to...
Apologize, some of you may have, we just realized that your PowerPoint pack got cut off some reason. Mine wasn't that way, but, or the mayor's, the mayor's got one. But you can follow along. We can get you, we'll get you the full deck afterwards if you'd like it. Sorry about that.
Street striping maintenance, we're allocating a separate budget item of $100,000 for that. Again, these are expenditures that up until now we've lumped in with the preventive maintenance. But as we add more, you know, infrastructure such as bicycle lanes, crosswalks, pedestrian enhancements, we're finding out that we're getting more striping out there to maintain, and it's important that we maintain these well because they are important to public safety and visual looks to the roads and to the community as well. So we want to be a little bit more deliberate about getting out and getting that work done. The master plan for the Public Works and Parks Operations Facility, there was a master plan done, I want to say back in the early 2000s, that proposed some major improvements and upgrades to the facility there. Facility is very old and aging, was built decades ago, I'm not even sure what year, but nothing, little if anything, has been done since the last master plan was done. So this provides some monies to perhaps take the old master plan off the shelf, dust it off, and get back to work on that and make some needed upgrades to meet, you know, current code requirements, ADA and so forth. Bike-ped improvements, we have $90,000 in there to do some improvements. The main project we have proposed for next year is to do some bicycle lanes on Garrison Street north of 44th up to the Arvada border, and would include some improvements to the intersections there where Garrison goes under I-70, some additional curb work to channel the traffic in the bike lanes a little better. Moving on, traffic signal improvements, $60,000 in there. We have a kind of an aging signal system out there that we're trying to keep upgraded and up to date. ADA improvements, $50,000 to provide upgrades and new infrastructure as needed to meet the requirements and priorities that we set up in our ADA improvement plan that was completed a year or so ago. This amount, the $50,000 is pretty consistent with what we've budgeted each year since we developed that plan. Neighborhood traffic management program, this is to address our requests for neighborhood traffic control, such as speed bumps, traffic calming. And then aerial photography, GIS, this is some additional monies to keep our records up to date, our mapping, whether that's utilities, property lines, a lot of data that's very useful to meet legal requirements and provide accurate information to people that use that info. Gateway signage, we completed a lot of the gateway signage work previously. We're putting some, keeping some monies in there for possibly some additional gateway signage at 26th and Kipling, and I think that's about the only place we're looking at right now, although there are other opportunities if council would want to entertain those. But that's, we're focusing on that intersection, hopefully maybe getting something in this year, next year. Clear Creek Master Plan is monies to assist us with our work on getting the FEMA flood maps updated. We're working in cooperation with Golden, Adams County, City and County Denver, all the other agencies that border Clear Creek there to get those maps updated, which is very important because it has strong implications on flood insurance for a lot of folks. So it'll be good to get that done, and it'll be real helpful to a lot of people. And then our neighborhood street, skipping one here, Neighborhood Street Light Program, that's some monies we put in there each year for neighborhood street light requests. And then easements and right-of-way, that's some additional monies if we need it for, say, miscellaneous projects such as undergrounding of power lines with XL. If there's some additional easements or right-of-way needed for that, it gives us a little extra cushion there.
Thank you, Scott. Then you look at, as a senior budget book, we put together a 10-year CIP budget. Council's not officially taking action on the out years, but we do this for planning purposes. If you look at the 10 years, we are showing a transfer of $3 million annually from the General Fund Reserves for CIP projects. And we have several line items that are consistent throughout the 10 years. Preventative street maintenance, we're plugging in $2 million a year. The Wadsworth Reconstruction Project is budgeted through 2022 for a total of $29 million more than what's already in the budget. Then other annual project funding for drainage, development-related projects, bike and ped improvements, we have $450,000 over a five-year period. ADA improvement, street lights, bridge maintenance. Bridge maintenance, as Scott mentioned, is a new line item we've put in there. We have 1.8 million budgeted over five years based on the needs that we've identified on our, a couple of our bridges that we have in town, and street striping maintenance, and then neighborhood traffic management are all annual projects that we have money allocated Now moving on to our open space fund budget, we're projecting expenditures of just over $3.5 million next year, and revenues of 2.3 million. And I'll let Joyce Manware go through what projects are in that budget.
So we have three major projects in the Open Space Fund budgeted for next year. One is the renovation of Prospect Park, Phase Two, at 1.2 million. This is approximately half the projected budget for that renovation, and it includes four lighted pickleball courts, a new pavilion in the south side, a new access road for safety, relocation to the playground away from the trail, et cetera, to finish up that project. That project is dependent on the revenues from residential developer fees, so our park in lieu of fee that is collected for any kind of residence, I guess, or is that how I would say it? Any subdivision that builds a residence, high-density apartment buildings, et cetera. And the sale of, a possible sale of park property on the corner of 38th and Johnson. So this project will be dependent on those two revenues being successful or coming in in 2019. We have the renovation of Anderson Park. As you know, we're backfilling or subsidizing the bond funds with monies from open space to complete the needed funding for that project. And then the green on 38th Avenue, there's a transfer from the General Fund into the Open Space Fund to plan and construct a green or public space at 38th in front of the Stevens Elementary School. We also have placeholders for open space improvements and park maintenance projects, and there's nothing specific this year for those two amounts. They're used for items that may come up during the year where we might need a new kiosk at a park or something along those lines. So we don't actually spend those monies unless there's something that is needed in those two areas.
Thank you, Joyce. And then on, moving on to our next fund, Conservation Trust Fund. Back to the open space fund, a majority of the revenues for the open space fund come from the county tax, open space tax, and other grants and such. The Conservation Trust Fund, the majority of the revenues come from the Colorado Lottery dollars, the city's portion of those. We're proposing expenditures of just over $303,000 next year, and I'll let Joyce explain those.
Okay, so again, we're backfilling the bond funds with monies from the Conservation Trust Fund to meet the projected expenditures. And those funds will be for the renovation of the Anderson Building itself. We're also have been allocating funding in the Conservation Trust Fund for recreation center, CIP or maintenance projects. That 103,700 represents for 2019 refinishing of the wood floors, new fitness equipment, new pumps, possible improvements to the HVAC, et cetera. And then we have a new playground. The Recreation Center will be 20 years old in 2020, and the playground that's located on the northeast corner needs to be replaced. So we have that budgeted in the Conservation Trust Fund as well at $100,000. And then every year, we do annual maintenance on our outdoor tennis and basketball courts. We crack seal them or resurface them or repaint them, whatever's needed. Panorama Park will be the focus in 2019.
And then the last fund that we're going to speak about in detail tonight is the Recreation Center Funds, and we have almost $2.5 million proposed as expenditures. And as you can see, the Indian Fund Balance for 2019 is proposed at about $12,000. So we've been speaking about this for the last several years with you, that we were going to get to a point where that fund balance was going to decrease. And Joyce and her staff have been doing numerous things to address that, and, you know, I can let her speak to that. But right now, expenditures exceed revenues pretty much about $200,000 a year, and it's depleting the fund balance. And maybe I'll let, Joyce, do you want to speak to those last three bullet points of things you've been working on?
Yes, well, as I mentioned, we've been, over the last few years, transferred the cost of the large maintenance items in the Recreation Center to the Conservation Trust Fund. That's an appropriate expenditure for that fund, and that's been able to carry the load. And I see that continuing in the future to help with that cost. The building, of course, is, again, 20 years old, so it's starting to need some additional maintenance. We've either been fortunate or unfortunate in some respects with our hailstorms because we were able to, a few years ago, get a new roof for the Recreation Center. So that's the good and bad news of that, but we have a five-year capital improvement plan that we're following. Let's see, we are in the process of completing the market analysis and developing a new fee policy, which we'll be bringing to council later in the fall. And really, just a brief description of that program is it is a software program where the program is built to accommodate or account for all of the costs that you incur to provide a certain service or program. And then you can look at that data and decide, or really know what it costs you in detail to, say, offer yoga or provide a park pavilion in the park. Then you can compare that to some of the market analysis for fees. But even as a larger part of that, it develops a fee policy philosophy about what type of programs you want to subsidize and what type of programs are appropriate to charge higher fees for that have more individual benefit. So right now, our fee policy is pretty much straight across the board. It's cost plus. This new fee policy that we'll be presenting to you will be cost plus based on a philosophy of individual benefit versus community benefit. So we're really taking a hard look at that. We know fees are important. Most of the recreation programs in the General Fund recoup about 30% of their cost, and then the Recreation Center, of course, has not been able to be self-sufficient, and that's due to really personnel costs. And with the new minimum wage law, that has impacted, if you can imagine, our 300 part-time employees. Most of them were at minimum wage or above, so there's been some significant financial impacts in that area in the Recreation Center Fund.
Thank you, Joyce. So moving on to some other budget strategic priorities that we may not have talked about yet that are included in the 2019 proposed budget. Our annual funding to the Wheat Ridge Urban Authority of $300,000 for them to perform their duties. This year, or 2019, we're projecting that our TIF dollars for our TIF projects are about $665,000, and those are for the Kipling Ridge Projects and the Wheat Ridge Coroner's Project. And I believe a portion of that will be for the West End 38th, 38th Project on up on the 38th. Those are awash, basically. We have to show them as an expense, but those are sales, new sales tax dollars coming in from those projects. But that's the amount that we've committed to paying back to those projects in 2019. Ridge at 38th Avenue, public events is $160,000 is what Local Works is asking for. The Wheat Ridge Business District Grant Program, we do have, currently have $45,000 in the budget. Mr. Demott just spoke earlier, asking potentially for another $40,000 for that, for the facade plus program. Our live local events for Local Works is $40,000. The building up business loan program or bubble for Local Works is $80,000. In our economic development budget, we have funds to help market, several of our commercial corridors, 44th Avenue has $7,500, the 29th Avenue Marketplace has $5,000, 38th Avenue is $30,000. We always try to do a new planning effort every year in a different corridor of the community and community development. Would like to do some type of sub-area plan or a different type of planning effort for the 44th Avenue corridor next year. We currently have a Fruitdale Plan that was done, I'm not sure how old that is now, 2006 that was done. It was kind of done very quickly and honestly with not a whole lot of discussion and thought, so we believe it's time for an update to that one. This year, we're working on, we had monies for a Kipling Corridor Plan, which we're currently working on to look at that, so. Some other things, continuation of our TLC Program, $30,000 that Local Works helps us with those programs. We do have a separate budget to manage and maintain our historic park and our historic buildings of $83,850. Whoops, I have 44th in there twice, I think, it looks like. We're not double-budgeting that, but Ken slipped that in at the last minute. in at the last minute. And let's see, lost track here. Large Item Pickup is an annual program we do for our residents to get rid of some large trash items. That's five thousand dollars. Carnation Festival of eighty thousand is what's in the budget. I believe they are requesting an additional twenty to forty-five thousand for the fiftieth Carnation Festival. And we do have, we budget for staff overtime for the Carnation Festival because it is pretty staff-intensive. So there's about just over twenty-five thousand that we budget for staff overtime for that. We are bringing, going to try to bring back a Citizen Academy this next year if we can get participants. So we have five thousand budgeted for that. Your outside agency Citizen Review Committee has recommended funding of a hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred and ten dollars to outside agencies. There's a list in your, in the budget message. We have sixty thousand dollars for the Wheat Ridge fiftieth anniversary celebrations throughout the year. Then on to fleet replacements. Scott can answer any questions if you have here, but we, we do have guidelines in place that City Council adopted a few years ago. We, we follow those guidelines. The guidelines are based on age and mileage hours of, of per units. 2019, we're proposing eight hundred and fifty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight in, in fleet replacement. A good chunk of that is for a snowplow in the Public Works Department, which is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Public Works has a lot, a lot of large pieces of equipment, which are very expensive, and we try to get at least one replaced, if needed, every year. Last year we got, or this year, we got a, a new street sweeper replaced. And so next year, we would like to get a new snowplow in there. That's about two twenty. They have a couple other vehicles, so about two hundred and sixty-four thousand in Public Works. Parks Department has a hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of vehicles, replacements, and for new vehicles for some new employees that we're requesting. Police Department has just over four hundred and twenty-six thousand of, of replacement vehicles, and also three new vehicles for some new employees, and then also a new vehicle for our current community services team. We've identified about one point seven million in vehicle replacements for the next several years, which we will be bringing back to you as those budget cycles come. Now to get into staffing changes, we are asking for a net increase of nine FTEs in 2009, and have pretty good detailed descriptions in, in your budget message that explain the justifications for these. But I'll let the department directors talk to these briefly here tonight, too. In the Parks Department, we're asking for two park maintenance, one workers, one FTE forestry assistant, and one FTE horticultural assistant. And Joyce, do you want to talk about those four positions, the justification?
Well, the two park maintenance worker ones are entry-level positions. They basically do mowing, bathroom cleaning, trash removal, pavilion cleaning. And we've added several new parks, and with the renovation of Anderson as well as Prospect, it's time. We've requested these. I think this is either the, probably the third year in a row. We're just not able to keep up with the maintenance of, of our parks in the, in the, at the quality level we'd like to. The forestry assistant we're requesting, just, we would like to continue to improve and rebuild our forestry program. During the 2002 layoffs, we lost our city forester, and the program really hasn't grown or, as I said, been maintained. Our urban forest been maintained at the quality we'd like to see. We have one forestry assistant who oftentimes has to work alone, and this is also a safety issue for the city. And then our horticultural assistant, we have one of those, and we've added many planting beds in these new parks, as well as the plants along Thirty-Eighth Avenue. And it just isn't possible to keep that up in all areas and keep all the shrub beds and flower beds planted. The, the other really cyclical piece of this is, we've had a difficult time with the labor market, hiring seasonals to help with this work. So that is the request for our FTEs.
Thank you, Joyce. And then the Police Department is requesting two, two additional police officers, a one-person's detective and one special investigations sergeant. Mr. Brandon?
So the two additional patrol officers are related to the development that we're seeing in the city, particularly the northwest corridor of the city, and the proposed build-out of both the Clerk Creek Crossing and the G Line. The plan right now is to, it takes us about eighteen months to recruit and hire and then train a patrol officer. So with the build-out both of the G Line and the opening proposed, you know, this year, and then subsequent build-out, some of the residential developments that are occurring there, residential developments that are occurring in other parts of the city, as well as what we anticipate seeing Clerk Creek Crossing. The idea is to add two patrol officers. We'd add one patrol officer to our swing shift on both end of the week so we can increase our staffing. We generally see our calls for service increase around ten AM, eleven AM in the morning until about eight or nine at night. So that would allow us to, to handle the, what we propose to be increases in calls for service as a result of, of the development that's, that's occurring. We're going to continue to look at how we're going to staff the, the new developments that may require the implementation of a new beat plan that adds a beat for the northwest corridor of the city specifically to, to handle that particular area, just, just do the types of development that we anticipate seeing there. But we're working closely with community development, City Manager's Office, to, to look at those proposed changes. The persons detective and the special investigations unit supervisor, we're all part of the 2016 study that we had done by the International Association Chiefs of Police. If you recall, they had recommended the hiring, or the addition of six additional sworn positions, four patrol officer positions to handle our current call, calls for service. They also recommended a persons detective to handle exclusively domestic violence kinds of investigations, persons kinds of investigations. And then they recommended a, another patrol commander. We feel a little bit differently, although I'd love to have another patrol commander. What I really need is a, is a sergeant to supervise our special investigation teams. We have two detectives assigned to the West Metro Drug Task Force, another detective assigned to the Metropolitan Auto Theft Task Force. That's a grant-funded position that we get reimbursed for. And then we have a detective, a new detective slot that we got two years ago, the vice intelligence function to help us deal with, you know, the counterterrorism piece, as well as, you know, things related to vice, prostitution, alcohol, marijuana, and those kinds of things. Right now, they're being supervised by my investigations commander, who's got responsibilities, you know, to oversee a, an investigations bureau, and Hispanic control is, is past the max. So this would give me the opportunity to have a sergeant who could oversee our drug investigation cases, assist West Metro with the larger-scale drug investigations, as well as oversee the counterterrorism and the vice components, and the Metropolitan Auto Theft Task Force Detective. So we're making a request for that position. The persons detective, you know, I touched on a little bit in terms of focusing on domestic violence. That's becoming more critical as the county, as the DA's office actually moves forward with this Family Justice Center, and some of the, some of the services that they would like to offer through that, that center, I think, will eventually place more demands overall on, on my persons detective and the persons unit. So we handle somewhere in the vicinity of about three hundred and fifty to four hundred domestic violence cases a year, plus another three hundred to three hundred and fifty domestic disturbance calls. So a lot of our misdemeanor calls, our misdemeanor domestic violence cases are assigned to our patrol division, and some of those become pretty complicated kinds of cases, and this detective would be able to assist with those as well. Be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Chief, I remember earlier a discussion about a community service vehicle. Is that, is that one of the three you're asking for now?
The community services vehicle is for our community services team. The staffing in that team is now at seven community service officers and supervisor, and there are days of the week when we just don't have enough vehicles to...
So is that vehicle in a different part of the budget then, or is that...
Well, no, it's, it, it was listed up there. The one, there are three vehicles that, that we're asking for, I believe Patrick had in his budget. One is a community services vehicle. We have a patrol vehicle that we're requesting, and then a vehicle for our special investigations unit supervisor, and one for the persons team, and additional vehicle for the persons team. So I think there's four vehicles listed in there, right?
Just three.
Just three. So we don't have a patrol vehicle in there.
No, then all your replacements. We have one patrol, one for the sergeant, and then one for CSO.
Okay, thanks.
So you have three requests, which includes the community service vehicle?
Yes.
Tell me my math is wrong, but do we, according to my math, that's a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars per vehicle. Is that right?
For, for a police vehicle?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, that's total replacement.
No, that's...
Total replacement for all our vehicles, plus the replacement.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I probably didn't explain that. The four hundred and twenty-six, five hundred thousand is, is, yeah, just as the chief said, we, we have annual replacement vehicles based on age and miles. Of that four hundred and twenty-six, three of them are, are new vehicles. That's what that note is. The new vehicles, a patrol vehicle's about fifty-seven thousand for, to be totally outfitted with lights and, and all the equipment it needs. And so, yeah.
So how many obsolete vehicles are being replaced?
Um, let's see, I can pull that up here. It's down here. For the PD specifically?
Mm-hmm.
We have, let's see, replacements, we have PD, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, six replacements, and then three new vehicles.
So those are all police cars?
Yes.
Well, patrol, I mean...
Patrol vehicles.
There's, there's patrol-marked vehicles, there's a patrol unmarked, there's an investigation unmarked car. But yeah, they're for the police department, not just patrol cars, but for investigation folks, too, detectives.
Okay. What is your goal? Is your goal to have a separate vehicle for every police officer?
Oh, absolutely not. If, if I did, you'd, you'd have a hundred vehicles. So we're not anywhere, anywhere close to a hundred vehicles. You know, when we, when we staff the streets, you know, during our overlap periods, we'll have anywhere from twelve to seventeen vehicles, patrol vehicles that are out. I think our current vehicle fleet's right over twenty vehicles. So we have just, just enough for the next shift to come on. After overlap for investigations, we have one vehicle for about every two detectives. And in our community services unit, we probably have about three-quarters of vehicle for, for each employee. So staffing there will, will depend. In, in patrol, we staff seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. Community services is seven days a week, about sixteen to eighteen hours a day. So you either double up employees, and so you're less effective and efficient, or you have enough vehicles that you can get officers out on the street. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. And then the final two positions we're requesting are part-time positions. They're, they're currently part-time positions. We're asking them to go to full-time. One is an IT support technician. We were pretty overrun this year, especially, but it is an ongoing need. This IT support technician is, is the one person that we have who supports employees at their desk, for their desktops, if they're having issues on printers and such like that. The rest of our employees, the, our other, what do we have? One manager and three, three network administrators. They are doing more strategic projects. This last year was the consolidation of our records, our communication center, which was very time-consuming in our records management system. It really pulls those people away from working on more strategic projects and having to go to desk to do desktop help support. So we'd recommend have, increasing that employee to full-time from halftime. And the other position is the digital communications specialist. We, that's Bridget, if you've met her. She, we currently, she's halftime. We'd like that to go to full-time. We really are starting to see a lot of improvements in our community outreach. We've been getting a lot of compliments on our social media for the amount of information we're getting out, and we still need to do more work on our website to make sure that we're keeping, being as transparent as possible and communicating with our public as much as possible. So increasing that position, we believe, would help us with all the different communication tools that we need in, in communicating with our, with our community. So on the next slide, yes, yes, ma'am. Yes.
Just have a question about staffing then. I mean, we have a public information officer that's full-time, and so is that not something that they can't help with the digital communication stuff, or can you explain why we need full-time both those?
We do. We have a full-time PIO that represents the whole city, and, and it's halftime that's reports to the police chief and, and the other half, to, to me right now, was to Heather. But that person manages a lot of things in a, in a public information focus that you would imagine. Work does our connections, newsletter that goes out five times a year. All of our press releases deals with media contacts. The current halftime person that we have primarily works on our website and all of our social media, our Facebook, our Nextdoor, getting stuff out on Nextdoor app, Twitter, in any social, social media platform that we have out there. So it's, it's a very busy function in the city, and it's getting busier. We are being pressured more and more to, to communicate more and more and on more on a timely basis. So it's very difficult right now. I'm not, I'm not honestly proud of, of our website. It's, it needs more attention, and the PIO doesn't have time to do, do the website work. Moving on to the next slide. So this is a representation of our staffing levels over the last four years. If you remember, during this year, we, our FTE count actually decreased by, by eighteen. Twelve from our communication center and six from our building department. We're still paying for those services through contract services. We believe we're going to be paying less than what our, what it cost us to pay for those employees when we had them on full-time. But we did drop down eighteen this year, but we did had, we did add six, I think, also as part of the 2018 budget. And then again, we're requesting another nine for 2019. So that would leave our total FTE count at two hundred and, just over two hundred and thirty-four. So not much of an increase over the last couple of years with those recent deletions of FTEs. And then the next slide is the breakdown of staffing by department. Police Department has decreased actually a little bit, again with the Communication Center being contracted out with Jeffcom, so that, they're the largest department still of a hundred and seven. Our Parks and Rec Department, which is, is in the, the general fund and the Recreation Center Fund, staffing is just over fifty-two. Administrative Services twenty-three, or Public Works first is thirty-one. Administrative Services twenty-three. Court, ten point two five. Community Development, six, and General Government, five. Next slide, we do, you probably can't see this up there, but it's just for show. We do, I ask staff to look at staffing needs that they might project for the next five years. All these positions haven't necessarily been fully vetted, but these are just current needs that we project, we might need in the next five years based on current workload and, and priorities for City Council. We've identified, identified about thirty, thirty-five FTEs over the next five years that we potentially may, may need to add to the budget. Employee benefits highlights for this year. We are on year seven of our pay performance plan, and we, we budget annually about just, just over four hundred and fifty thousand a year to distribute throughout the departments to provide pay-for-performance increases to employees. This averages as about a three percent increase across the board. Employees are eligible for a zero to five percent increase, non-sworn off, employees, and our police officers are on a step program, which is at about six point five percent, I believe, are their step increases, only in, if employees... Um, only in, if employees, um, uh, receive a satisfactory, uh, performance evaluation will they get an increase. Uh, we just, we are finalizing a market study this year. We do that every other year to make sure that our, um, our job classifications are, are remaining competitive. Um, as you all know, or may know, um, it's a very competitive job market right now. It's very difficult to hire people. Um, we need to stay as competitive as possible. Um, it's tough to, to get good talent. The unemployment rate is, 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 is difficult, um, situation right now to get good talent. So it's very important that we stay, um, somewhat competitive in the market so that we're, we're attracting, um, good talent. So one of those, um, areas that we were not, um, competitive in the market, um, which we evaluated, is our retirement contributions. Currently, the city contributes, uh, four percent of the employee's salary to, um, ICMA four-oh-one-A account. Um, we did an analysis, and we are, um, well below the market. The market's average for employer contribution to the four-oh-one-A account, um, is about six-point-two percent. Um, so we're, we're proposing that we increase that in the nineteen budget from four to six percent. Um, that's about a hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar, um, impact on the budget. The best, the great news for two thousand and nineteen, no increases to any of our medical benefits. That is almost unheard of these days, um, so we're very proud of that. Um, we have a very good insurance broker that helps us with that. Um, we, we are only with Kaiser right now, so, um, that sometimes isn't, uh, the best option for employees if they don't have options, but, um, it's been able us to, enabled us to control our costs over the years by, um, remaining with, with, with one. And Kaiser will not, um, necessarily sit, or any other insurance company doesn't want to sit along, um, aside Kaiser. Um, so, because our, our employee, um, group is too small, so if you split that employee count between Kaiser and, say, half the employees went to a different, like at Netna or United Healthcare, there, there's just not enough employees. It's a smaller group, so, um, it's hard to get bids from other insurance, um, providers. So we've stuck with Kaiser for quite some time, and, uh, we offer a high deductible plan and a deductible HMO plan. Um, and we also have a very, um, uh, well-participated, very high participation in our wellness programs. Um, we provide incentives to employees for those, and I, I really do believe that that's helped us, kept, kept our, uh, premiums, um, at a minimum. Um, so there's no increases to our Kaiser premium for next year, no increases to our dental, or our short-term disability, or our life insurance, um, so, um, status quo on all of those, so that's, that's very great news. A few, uh, other short-term fiscal notes, I just want to, um, make public for you guys this evening and send your budget message, but, um, sales tax, where we are projecting, um, about a five-point-four percent increase compared to what we're estimating this year, so that's, that's good news. A good chunk of that, about a third of that, is coming from the Coroner's Project. Um, and some other good news, um, which is, is coming in the future, I haven't, um, included any of these other revenues in the two thousand and nineteen budget, but we are projecting that we will see some additional revenues in two thousand and nineteen for, from some other projects. The Walmart closure, um, Regency is working on, um, backfilling that with four new national tenants. Um, they believe, um, a, a majority of that will be open by the end of the year and port, the rest of it by, um, beginning of two thousand and twenty. Um, again, I haven't included those revenues in the budget, but we're estimating that those retail tenants should generate anywhere between eight-hundred and nine-hundred thousand a year. Um, so if, if they bring in, I've been told they potentially could come in, in fourth quarter, so we, we could see additional two-to-three-hundred thousand in, in revenues that are not currently projected in the budget. Clear Court Crossing Project, um, we will be, get reimbursed, um, for some expenses that the city has had for the I-seventy, um, and Thirty-second Avenue Environmental Assessment Project. We, we spent over, um, half a million on that, and, um, it's in our agreement with Evergreen that they will reimburse us for that as soon as they issue their bonds for the project, and they are projecting to issue those sometime next year, so I didn't include that revenue source in the budget either, so we should hopefully see that next year. Um, so that will be, um, some, um, additional revenues not in the budget. Um, and then once the Clear Court Crossing Project is up and running, um, sometime in two thousand and twenty or two thousand and twenty-one, um, we should start seeing about one-point-eight million in additional revenues, sales tax, use tax, um, lodging tax, admissions tax, um, from that project. So those are revenues that will be, um, part of the general fund budget here in not too long. Um, and then a few other, uh, small projects that are being done right now, there's just a, a little uncertainty on when they're going to finish, so again, I didn't include the revenues for these other projects. Applewood Shopping Center has a couple out parcels, um, that they're looking at, and that includes the, um, Hacienda Colorado, there's a, another fast-food joint that might be going in where the Wells Fargo Bank was. Um, the Kipling Ridge Project has a tenant in mind for their, um, vacant parcel next to Starbucks, and West End Thirty-Eight is, is, um, projected to have, I think, eight-thousand, eight-to-ten-thousand square feet of retail, um, in their project along Thirty-eighth Avenue. So, um, all of those projects will, are projected to generate about three-hundred-thousand dollars a year. Um, again, we just don't know when they're going to come online. They, they probably will be towards the fourth quarter of next year, so, um, maybe a portion, maybe another hundred, one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand potentially could come in in two thousand and nineteen from those projects. Okay, wrapping up here. Um, so, opportunities for public input, um, on the budget, we had included the outside agency committee, which I mentioned earlier, they, they're recommending a hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-ten, um, in contributions to outside agencies. We had two public input opportunities back on July tenth. We had one citizen, um, asked for some pedestrian safety improvements on West Thirty-eighth Avenue. She asked for those again this evening, um, August fourteenth. Um, we, we didn't have any citizen comment on the budget that evening. Um, our next steps in the budget process, we're looking for consensus and/or other direction on the two thousand and nineteen budget this evening. Um, we had the request this evening for the Wheat Ridge Environmental Sustainability Committee of eighteen thousand, um, Carnation Festival, Wheat Ridge Business District, and Thirty-eighth Avenue. Um, some additional requests that are not included in your budget. Um, right now, we're scheduled to bring back the budget on October eighth for the official public hearing and adoption of the budget and the certification of the property tax milletting. With that, we'll open it up for questions.
Questions? Thank you, Patrick. Good, good presentation. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I guess this question is for Patrick. Uh, with respect to the Billion Department, um, I'm looking at the page one-on-one, it indicates a, uh, total expenditures of about eight-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand. Um, but based on our contract with, uh, Charles Abbott and Associates, my understanding was a portion of our, our fees would be retained while, I think it was sixty-eight percent would go, uh, to pay Charles Abbott, but when we look at these expenses here, it doesn't indicate as though we're retaining anything, uh, in that department.
The, the revenues that you'll see, what we're retaining are under the expenditures and revenue section. Um, so the, the plan review fees and, um, the, I guess, well, and then a portion, they're not getting any of the use tax, right? So, plan and review fees, and Ken's pulling up to that page, so I'll let him explain it. But, so yeah, the, the number that you're referring to on one-on-one is eight-fifty-five, which is, is lower than what we've been spending, um, for the building department, um, when we had that in-house. Um, but we can go over the revenues too, um, if you'd like, and Ken can explain the, the tiered, um, revenue approach that, um, how much we pay based on, um, annual, uh, work.
Yeah, good question, Mr. Urban. So you're, you recalled correctly, it is a tiered fee, fee structure, so, uh, on a monthly basis, for the first zero to sixty thousand dollars in building permit, plan review, and contractor license fees, those are the three pots of money that we share with them. Uh, they get sixty-eight percent of those revenues. Uh, if we generate revenues from sixty to one-hundred thousand, they get sixty percent of those additional revenues, and above a hundred thousand, it's fifty-five percent. Um, we've had a really strong revenue year in the building division, um, really more non-storm-related than storm-related. Uh, some big, big projects that we frankly weren't expecting that are soon to go out the door. But I average, uh, what that is every month, it's been averaging about a hundred-and-seven-thousand dollars a month, uh, and that reflects a blended rate of about sixty-two percent. So that tiered structure is netting out about sixty-two percent. Uh, that's the number that we used for budgeting purposes for two thousand and nineteen. So I did my standard, uh, estimating of what I thought the trend line was, uh, fairly conservatively, as always, of what those three different revenue sources would generate, uh, and then I took sixty-two percent of that as how I generated the proposed budget for Charles Abbott.
And then, uh, I see that in the Billion Department, we've zeroed out the FTEs, but in the planning department, the FTEs remain the same while the, uh, planning review fees are going to Charles Abbott and Associates, so are they, uh, doing, uh, additional work on top of what the four FTEs are, or why do we still have the four FTEs in the planning department when we're asking Charles Abbott and Associates to perform some of those services?
Um, probably a couple reasons. Uh, Charles Abbott doesn't really perform any planning functions, so long-range planning, zoning, land-use case processing, zoning code amendments, all those things continue to be done by planners. And the planners also still continue to have the role that they have processing building permits. So probably two-thirds of the permits that go out the door, uh, also require some sort of a zoning review, whether it's a landscape plan, or a lighting plan, or making sure it complies with zoning setbacks, et cetera, et cetera. So the, the forty-ish or thirty-eight percent that we retain, um, from our building permit revenues, I think, really offsets those costs fairly well still, uh, but the, the, the workload for the planners has not changed at all.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Hoppe?
I have a few, but they're kind of all over the board, but I, I would like to ask, if I could, um, ask Mr. Demott some questions on his, um, Carnation Festival P and L.
Mr. Demott, would you mind going, coming to the, um, podium?
Um, Joe, thanks for putting this together.
Yeah.
My, what my question is, is I see that the, um, circus brings in a revenue of seventeen-thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty, but then the circus fees, the expenses, are forty-one-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty, which puts us twenty-four thousand and something upside down with that. Can you talk about why we're carrying such a heavy loss leader with the Carnation Festival?
Well, is this one? Um, you know, as we've said, we try to keep it, although a lot of the things in our, our festival are free, we try to keep the things that are paid low. So we did actually lower our ticket prices this year to ten dollars to get more people to see it. Um, and the reason being is, uh, people tend to focus on what we pay the circus as to what we make on the circus. Um, the simple fact is, the circus is the only thing we do make money on. So we spend roughly twenty, over twenty-five thousand dollars on music, stage, PA, staffing, things like that. We make zero dollars on that. So music generally is a twenty-six-thousand-dollar loss. The semantics of it is, you know, we try to balance that against our beer sales and stuff like that. Um, the circus, um, is something that the, the board, the festival board feels is a part of our festival, um, for, you know, these few years come, well, maybe not coming, but I can't speak for the board. Um, but, uh, you know, the, the crowd that goes to the circus, um, we just feel that if we eliminated the circus, we'd really have a beer garden with music. So it's really just, it brings in the crowd that we really want to see, the crowd, the, the part of the city that we feel bring in the kids and stuff, and they want somewhere to go, and they can sit down and for ten bucks for two hours, um, you know, tends to be a, a very cheap, um, event for them during the, during the festival.
Thank you for answering that for me. Does anybody else want to ask Joe any questions before we make him go sit back down?
Mr. Matthews?
Joe, could you tell us, um, how our attendance at the circus has been doing? If we've been keeping some numbers, how many tickets we've sold?
Um, yeah, the, uh, you know, obviously, when our, when our crowd is high at the festival, we sell out that show. The, the circus tent can be set up for about seven-hundred people. We only have them set it up for about five-hundred. So the evening, the later evening shows on Friday and Saturday are always, are at, at capacity. Um, the four o'clock show, Saturday, they all, they all did really well Saturday. Um, and the early Friday show was at about sixty-five percent capacity. Um, the Sunday show, we, um, we were busy because we had some bulk sales that we sold out entire sections of the, to different, um, organizations in town and stuff like that. So for the most part, the, uh, the circus across the last, I guess, five years they've been here, it, you know, it, it sort of waned in the middle, and it, in the last year, it came down. I would say it's down about ten percent from last year, um, attendance-wise. The money was less this year because we did lower the price of the tickets.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Additional questions for Mr. Demott? Uh, Ms. Davis?
So I just have kind of a question on that.
Yeah.
So Joey, do you think, I mean, it's interesting that we're saying that the circus is a part of the Carnation Festival, considering it hasn't really been there that long. Um, so, I, I mean, I'm all for having some kind of kid events there. Um, I'm all for having two different stages there. Sometimes the stage incorporates some types of kids' events, or Celtic, I, I know you get kids out there that can do Celtic dances and those types of things. I'm just wondering, is there, uh, any other kind of draw? I mean, 'cause, I mean, I, I understand that that's the only thing we can do that gets money, but that's forty-three thousand dollars, we only get seventeen thousand, so it costs us twenty-five thousand, so I guess indirectly, why not spend twenty-five thousand that might draw other groups, other, you know, and, you know, more crowds in, that still might be family-oriented, kids-oriented? You know, I'm, I'm just wondering if the circus has lived its life, because I don't, you know, being a resident of Wheat Ridge all my life, I don't see the Zopi Circus as the Carnation Festival. I mean, I, I do think it, the tent's been cool out there the last few years, but I don't think it's the fifty-year heritage of the Carnation Festival. But I do like the kid idea. I'm just wondering if there's some other things we could be, or have out there that could draw families? Any thoughts on that? I mean, I know it's hard and...
Sure.
It's got to get tiring, and everyone has to put their two cents in.
No, we always, we always look for new things, you know? And generally, what we do is, every year, you know, you got to look at, when the circus comes in, they bring their own tent. That's a, that's a cost that, you know, our facilities are upwards of thirty thousand dollars. You know, thirty-seven thousand, because we have a lot of different things. We have tents and fencing and all that kind of stuff. The circus is truly self-sustaining. They come in, not self-sustaining, that's the wrong word, all-inclusive. They bring everything. They bring their chairs, they bring their tent, they bring their box office, they bring their fencing. So where you would have to bring in a different, um, event for younger people, you would then have to also bring in facilities. So it would probably end up being in the forty-thousand-dollar range. We've looked at some things that tend to be up there in the forty-thousand-dollar range either way. Um, there was an increase this year for the, for the circus of about sixteen-hundred dollars from years past. But, uh, anything that we do that we charge money for, or that we try to recoup some money, always has that additional upfront expense. So what we try to do, what we really look at ahead of time is, what are we not risking? So they do take some risk with us, um, and if it, if we were to have a rainout, we have what we call costs that, you know, we cannot recoup, and then we have costs that we will recoup if everything, you know, like it did this year, the weather was great and the attendance was great, and, um, but certain things, we take a risk on. Um, we always plan for the worst and hope for the best, and that, you know, like I say, if, if, um, you know, semantics were, I would argue that the music doesn't bring in any money. So that's a, that's a twenty-five to thirty-thousand-dollar guaranteed loss every year because we don't, we don't charge anything for that music.
Yeah, and I guess...
So is there other things? Yeah, we always look for new things, and we're, you know, we're always looking for different...
And is our intent for it to bring in money? I guess that's, is that our intent? Because I don't think that's our intent.
Our intent is to have a great time.
Right, and...
Have a little bit of something for everybody.
And audience, and...
And audience and families. I don't think it's to bring in money.
Right. Our, our intent is to celebrate the inception of the city every single year.
Right, right.
So it's not, you know, we don't look at it as a profit center by any means.
Right.
You know? But we hope that everybody has a heck of a good time.
Right.
So, and we're always open for suggestions.
Thank you. Mr. N.
Joe, so the circus has been part of the Carnation Festival for five years. So are you projecting that they're going to stay another two years, three years? Or is that a decision made strictly by the board? Or how does that work?
It, well, it's been made by the board, yeah. And the festival board. And, you know, we, as a board, we have, you know, usually between eighteen and twenty-two, twenty-three people. And last year, we, you know, it was unanimous that they came back this year, that it is part of our festival. It's a, it's a great part. And I would, I, we haven't, we did have a meeting last week, but we didn't really take consensus on for sure if the, if the festival, if the circus would be back or not. So it's not a guaranteed thing for next year, but
Okay. I know everyone looks forward to that circus, just like the music, you know, it draws people in. The circus draws families in. So I know that's one thing everybody talks about and looks forward to.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe?
Yeah, I just want to follow up and say, you know, I, from the perspective, as you explained it, it's something that brings in the families. And so it's not necessarily something that you're trying to make money on there, but that it's something to enhance the experience. And I think that that was a good explanation. So thanks, Joe.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional questions for Mr. Demott, while we've got him at the mic? Thanks, Joe. Additional questions on the budget? Presentation? Ms. Dozeman?
I have several questions, but I'll start with my easiest one. And it's just a point of clarification. So the assistant to the city manager was moved from the administrative positions line item to your city manager budget, right?
Yes, and, and any programs and projects that person works on, the citizen academy and innovation team. And so those expenses related to that position also came over. So that's why you see that large increase, yes.
Okay. And then just one question on the strategic priorities. So that's page fifteen. The Thirty-Eighth Avenue marketing for thirty thousand dollars, is that in addition to what Local Works has allocated? Or is that a part of the Local Works budget?
That is what goes to Local Works.
That is?
Yes.
Local Works, okay. And is that reflected in the?
That is in the 105 budget, the economic development budget. Is that what you're asking, where it's at?
Yeah, because a lot of what I'm seeing reflected on the strategic priorities is also a part of the Local Works budget. So I was just
Oh, on their budget?
Wondering if they reflected it in theirs, and if it was the Thirty-Eighth Avenue marketing materials of the thirty thousand, or if it's a part of one of the others?
Yeah, it's, it's, yes, the one, the Thirty-Eighth Avenue marketing materials.
Okay.
Thirty thousand, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We did remove, since Local Works did present their budget, we did delete thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty from their proposed budget for the NRS reaffirmation. We didn't feel there was an expense that they needed to take on. We, the city has a pretty comprehensive contract that we're paying for, for that process. So we did take thirteen thousand seven hundred and fifty out of their budget.
Are you good? Oh, Ms.
Oh, she's not done. I can wait.
Well, I'll go to Ms. Davis.
Okay. So I have several, you, you guys always know me on these budgets. So I have many questions, but one of them, I'll start with the four oh one, the contribution of six percent. Can I ask you, is that a flat percent, or does the employee have to contribute?
No, the employee contributes four percent at this point.
And then the city would match?
Right, right now, the city, the employee contributes four, the city matches at four. And we're proposing that this, the city's contribution goes up to six, and employees can stay at four. And that, that's, again, commensurate with what the market is right now. And we've really struggled with
What the, probably the municipal market is, would you say?
Well, it is. But that's, that's a big, big chunk of our competition. And we've lost several good employees, personal, well, or potential employees because of retirement specifically. We can't compete, especially if they're coming from out of state, that employees have, are in para. We just can't compete. And we've lost several because of that.
All right. And then I would, I would request that we go back on the FTEs and see if we could maybe look at that and maybe start with a lower number, and then kind of go back with and ask later. I mean, I understand, you know, I mean, we're looking at a number and said, you know, some of this, you know, we had. And I know, like, the parks, the maintenance worker, and the forestry assistant, and the horticulture assistant. I mean, I know when we say, well, we, in two thousand and two, you know, we had, you know, seven of these, and now we don't. And I, I'm just wondering if maybe this year, we could start with one more, and then see how the one more goes, at least like with the parks and maintenance worker. I mean, on here, we're putting these new positions, we also assist in the installation and removal of the new portable fence. Well, you know, first of all, that's probably not going to be until spring, right? So that won't even be a part of that. And then our understanding is, it's going to be pretty limited. So I guess I'd rather understand how often and time-consuming that's going to be, before we put that in someone's job description as an FTE. I guess, I just want to be really mindful of some of these, especially when we have some of these task force people that have spent so much time, you know, about, you know, and making recommendations of, you know, the environmental task force and what they could do, that we're going to go and do. And not that these aren't important too, I know it's all important, but I'd rather start with a little chip and say, okay, if we do one parks and maintenance worker, and see how that's helped with the new parks. Because, you know, if I looked in the budget, there's also six other maintenance workers with two, you know, with category two. So that would give us seven maintenance workers to, you know, make sure bathrooms are clean, and, you know, do those other things. So I guess my request is, could we go through there and just take another look and say, okay, what do I, I mean, what do I really, really need? I, I know how people feel. I just had to do the same thing in my world, and had to do a twelve percent decrease in my budget. So I know how people feel. And it doesn't feel good, but sometimes, you know, there are things we can do and make it work. So I would, I would like to look at some of these FTEs to see if there's a way we could start with, you know, a couple happy mediums. So that's my feeling. And I know I do this every year. People are like, Kristi, you don't know, you don't do their job, you don't understand. And you're right, I don't. But I would like to start with a baby step on some of these. So, so that's one of my first general requests. I think my other general request on this is, when I went through and looked at a lot of these departments, first of all, a lot of these departments, I want to say, thank you. And I could, I highlighted a few of them. Because when I looked at their materials and supplies, they either broke even or were less. But some of them, like, were significantly more. And then I went over the strategic priorities, and I didn't really understand why they were more. And so, again, I don't, and again, it's going to be like, Kristi, you don't understand. But, you know, like, for instance, I'm going to just use this one, because probably the police chief can give me the example. And, and I guess maybe in the future, but you guys only have one more year that you have to deal with me going line by line on your budget. But like, for instance, I'm going to look page one nineteen under the police department. And I know no one ever wants to pick on the police department. But materials and supplies, good job, please, chief, because materials and supplies, you're down two thousand dollars from your estimated twenty eighteen. So thank you on that. And then other service and charges, up forty-five thousand. So then I want to go over here, and I'm guessing that forty-five thousand might be annual in-service training required by post. So I guess those are the kinds of things, that I'm looking at some of these. And I don't see what this additional charges are on some of these service and charges. And what I want to make sure is, when I look at these, that I see what our, our community is getting for some of these kind of department charges that are, for lack of a better word, kind of built in your budget, that as, as a community, they might not see. And it could be things that we could save a little bit of money on, so that we could help with the environmental committee, or sidewalk, or a bike lane, or those types of things. So, chief, what's that forty-five thousand?
Sure. So I can answer that. You know, here about a month ago, I brought forward a budget supplemental for this year's budget to pay for, you know, the costs associated with recruits to the Jefferson County Lakewood Regional Academy.
Uh-huh.
So next year, I've built that in. We anticipate hiring twelve recruits in two thousand and nineteen. That'll be based on attrition through retirements and resignations. We do an attrition survey about every two years, to kind of give us an idea of what we'll see. The other thing that we're facing right now, and it ties into sort of Patrick's description, in terms of how competitive the market is, I've lost three employees this year to larger departments. They're, they're able to offer much more competitive packages than I can. So I've lost two to Denver, I've lost one to, to Aurora PD. And I've got at least two others that I'm aware of right now that may be leaving next year. I've got some anticipated retirements. So I took those attrition numbers, you know, of, of what we've traditionally built into that budget, and, and added that, you know, twelve positions that I'm going to have to hire next year to replace, or, or to add, because we're asking for two additional police officer positions. And so if you take those twelve positions, you time it by six thousand dollars, it comes out to seventy-two. So that, that, that's that increase that you're seeing there.
Okay.
It's part of what we've traditionally had in that budget, plus the additional costs to hire, or actually to train twelve people, so.
Yeah. So, and, and so I'm used to like zero-based budgeting, that would list, like, all of this. With, you know, like, you know, again, I'll just go crash and traffic team. You know, actual budget for other services was one thousand four hundred and eighty-seven, proposed in, and then actual twenty eighteen was one thousand eight hundred and fifty, proposed sixty-one hundred. And I'm, you know, I, I think this is just an example, but it's in every department and every other services, which it, it just adds up. So I think that's just my request, as I look through all of these. You know, I could comb through and get Joey's money. You know, because it all, it adds up. It might be, you know, five thousand here, three thousand here, but it's hard to understand what it's going towards, and how much of it, could we be a little bit more, could we scrutinize more as department heads and be a little tighter? So I, I know every year, they say, Kristi, these people know best. But as my job, I just hope everyone's scrutinizing this as best we can, because I, I just know it's hard. We always want to get what we want, but sometimes we have to maybe give up a little bit so that we can all do the best.
Well, Kristi, you shouldn't, shouldn't apologize for scrutinizing the budget. That's your job. So, you know, no need to apologize for that. I can tell you that we, you know, doesn't mean there's something that you still wouldn't want to cut. But I tell you, we do analyze every line item with the departments. And, and we do variance budgeting, where we look at, you know, you're, every year, you ask for ten thousand, but you only spend two thousand. Why do you need ten thousand? So let's cut that back. And, you know, I don't know if you want to answer on the crash and traffic team, but there's usually somewhat of an explanation for most of these. And that one, why they're only estimating to spend eighteen fifty this year, is because the crash and traffic team hasn't been staffed. And so they're not spending the money. We're hoping that they're going to be fully staffed in two thousand and nineteen, so that's why there's sixty-one hundred in there. And, you know, some, some of those, those costs are
Some of them are associated with our motorcycle operators. We'll be training two new motorcycle operators. We've had one of our motorcycle operators is going to get
That's okay. You don't have to explain. It's just, you know,
Move the cord for him, but
You know, you go through and you see them all, and
I understand.
They're all increased. I mean, I was happy to see, I want to give, you know, I'm going to send stickers around next week to anyone who was kind of flat. Woo! Yay, thank you. So anyways.
Well, look at the overall budget too, though, Kristi. And, I mean, you know, our, well, I mean, our total
I did.
Our total increase is one point five percent. So, you know, there might be increased, bigger increases in some areas and decreases in other areas. So, you know, I like to look at the total budget, if, you know, if we can keep that total increase down. But, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you. Along the lines of staffing, I would like to say that I was extremely disappointed not to see a sustainability coordinator in two thousand and nineteen proposed. I do see that in the five-year plan, it's a halftime is proposed for two thousand and twenty. But I would like to see a halftime in two thousand and nineteen. And I don't know if that's some, that we could maybe do the horticulture assistant at halftime, and then have this sustainability heel coordinator at halftime. Or if we could not do the horticulture assistant and hope that the seasonal workforce would be better this year than it has been in years past. But I would really like us to consider that coordinator for two thousand and nineteen. My other question is, for Scott, did you consider in your budget and your staffing, snow removal for abandoned areas? Because when we had to first originally started with the snow, you know, code enforcement, we had looked at there's areas that are abandoned that we may have to pick up as a city. And so I'm just wondering if that is something that you're going to look at in two thousand and nineteen?
No, we did not specifically. One of the things we wanted to come back to council and discuss after we adopted the sidewalk ordinance was, if we really identified some areas where we, where we've had problems. Being the last two winters have been pretty mild, we didn't get a lot of feedback on that yet. So that is something we'd like to discuss a little further with council, maybe at a later time, is, is do we, you know, want to have an identified program for hitting some of those areas?
Great, thanks. And then, kind of my last thing as far as staffing goes, is I guess I'm a little disappointed that our current PIO can't take care of some of our digital communications, like Facebook and Twitter, that would then free up the digital communications specialist to work on the website more. And so I'm just kind of wondering
She does, she does some of it. But I was thinking about my explanation last time, and I probably should have maybe explained a little bit more what Sarah currently does. And I mean, just right now, she's, you know, she's working on a potential, she does a lot of the event planning for us, too. So she's working on the fiftieth anniversary planning. She's working on a potential G-line opening station. She's done all of our, she does a lot of her ribbon cuttings with Steve and then the Wheat Ridge Business Districts. Chief, what, I mean, she works for you, too, did, I mean, some of the things that she has to do for the police department. It's, we really don't have, she does some of the social media stuff, but we, I really believe that this increase in the halftime digital communication specials is really to focus on the website. Again, I'm not, I'm not happy with our website. And it's not, we have missing links. There's, the data's out, the, the data gets out of date very quickly. And it's because we don't have somebody that focuses on it. And unless we don't get some more help, it's, it's going to be the way it is for a while.
And then just from a PD perspective, Sarah's probably dealing with, you know, three to six media stories, you know, a week related to, you know, to crime, that occurs. Uh, our Facebook page is a very busy Facebook page, and we get a lot of service requests. We get some complaints that come through, uh, there. Uh, Sarah also monitors and, and, uh, you know, Wheat Ridge neighbors, there's, there's probably three to, to six other Wheat Ridge-related sites that she monitors to see, you know, what's, what's mentioned about the city, what might be mentioned about the Police Department. And we've been really using her to, um, to help us with, uh, with our police recruitment. Uh, videos, uh, we've done video, uh, we're doing safety videos every year, you know, that target, we did last year's was Halloween Safety, the year before that was, uh, you know, school pedestrian safety. Uh, we try to use her to, to help us develop that storyline. Uh, in regards to that, we're doing another recruitment, uh, video this year. Uh, you know, recruiting police officers has gotten very, very competitive, uh, where I was getting 350 to 400 applications several years ago, uh, for our current recruitment. We're at about 140, and of, of those, only 30 have, have actually submitted all of their paperwork to take the test. So if I have to hire eight police officers, I'm not gonna get them out of, out of 30 applicants. We're trying to, uh, you know, to, to promote the city and, and what makes this city great, and why people would wanna come here and work, so, uh, that's a lot of what she does, does for me. Uh, she participates in, uh, my management team, promotes some of the stories that comes out of that. So I keep her busy probably 50% of, of her day, do, doing things for us, and, uh, uh, you know, I, I am surprised, to be honest with you, at the impact of social media, you know, on the city and the PD, it is, it is a major chore. You know, Denver, you know, has, has, you know, six PIOs, you know, that, uh, that handle different, different events in their city and their social media, so we're just a microcosm of that, really, so I hope that helps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and then my last comment is just, I support, um, an additional $20,000 to the Carnation Festival and 45 to the Wheat Ridge Business District. Um, and, but I do realize that that's probably money that we'd have to find from somewhere else, although we are at a 19%, maybe that's where we find it very easily, but, um, I just wanted to put out there that I support those.
Thank you, I think Mr. Matthews had next, and then Ms. Dozeman.
Patrick, I can't find Local Works in the budget. It used to be under your, uh, section, but I, I've not been able to find it anywhere.
It's under, yeah, it's under the City Manager's Budget, under the Economic Development Division, um, 105. Um, if you look in the, the line item pages in the back...
261.
Yep, 261. Um, so a majority of, of their expenses are under line item 721, the NRS implementation. That's kind of a carryover, um, as, I'm sure you remember Wheat Ridge 2020, now Local Works was created out of the 2005, um, Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy.
Is that 380 all of it, or is there stuff spread out somewhere else?
No, that, that's a portion of it. Their, their total budget that they're proposing is, is, um, 550,500 for 2019.
And how would we know that, and where would we find it?
Um, I provided you their, their budget in, in the front of your book, um, but that, that's a portion of it. Um, a portion is also under marketing and sponsorships, that's where the 40,000, um, that goes to, let's see...
Sorry, I started reading at the back chapter and found out how the story ended.
Um, yeah, it's, it's, all, all their money is spread out through the Economic Development Budget, um, but a chunk of it, most of it's in that one line item, 721, and I, I can, I can tell you where the rest is, if you'd like.
So if I, if I could just kinda jump in, 'cause, um, some of my comments were kind of surrounding, um, specifically the Local Works Budget, and where I kind of see some overlapping, um, in other areas, and where I feel like maybe we could save some money. Um, I'd first like to start off with, I was hoping to get more of a detailed budget as opposed to a regurgitation of what we have already seen in a study session. Um, I'm still really uncomfortable with $90,000 allocated to different, to two different forms of communication, education, outreach, or engagement, um, some sort of, some sort of communications in addition to the $30,000 for the marketing materials. I, I think that a 30,000 to 50,000 jump for the community engagement and communications is a little much, um, especially since we already have $40,000 allocated in 2018 for the communications, education, and outreach, which I don't really know the categorical difference in those.
Did you get, you had this in your book, too?
Yeah, I, yeah, I did. Um, so, I just, so they, they speak specifically to the community outreach and education about leadership capacity building in academies. So, I know that there are some things like Pints and Policy, um, and Partners in Progress that have kind of formed under the umbrella of Wheaties Academy, uh, but I know that we are not having a Wheaties Academy in 2019, um, that it will presume in 2020. Um, as a graduate of that program, I think that that is one that's very beneficial in engaging residents and creating leaders that, um, are sustainable in the community. Uh, however, I just think that there's, um, a lot of overlapping with other organizations and other programs, um, so like the, for example, the $80,000 to the Local Works Home and Business Loans, they've admitted that they're going to suspend the HIT program, which is the home portion of that program, um, and they're going to continue on with the BUBBLE program, which is the business loans, um, which is much like what the Wheat Ridge Business District already does in, in their organization. And we've, I would agree to give Wheat Ridge Business District, um, more money, and I would like to see this $80,000 that was, um, asked of us, that is up $30,000 from last year, um, be decreased, either, um, the $45,000 that we've allocated to the Wheat Ridge Business District, since they administer it through Local Works anyways. I don't understand why we have two of the same programs under two different organizations. Um, yeah, if you, if you wanna answer that, uh...
Well, I do know that there are two different, um, programs. One is a grant program, the Wheat Ridge Business District is a grant program. Um, we have different categories that we grant through, like facade and, um, uh, signage, which is the, kind of our most important one.
Landscape.
Landscaping, um, paint, which it's different than facade.
ADA.
An ADA compliance, so, but the Building Up Business Loan is a loan that a business can get that's not necessarily for like, uh, exterior, um, stuff, so like, it's a loan that they can get that has a low interest, and it's a five-year, it's a five-year loan, and then with like a bubble, a balloon payment at the end. And then it's got, uh, I think it's like 4% interest, so the first year's no interest, the next couple of years are 4% interest. So they're, they're two, they do two different things, though, so just so you know.
So if I'm reading off of the Local Works, uh, website, their eligible project costs are exterior facade improvements, sign repairs or replacement, interior renovations, small business equipment purchases, new commercial building development, and the projects must include exterior improvements visible from the street. 0% interest, year one, 4% interest, two, years two to five. So that's almost exactly what you just said the Wheat Ridge Business District does.
Except that people pay it back, and the Wheat Ridge Business District give it as a grant.
Okay, alright.
I guess we have two different...
I understand, so it's a, it's a loan versus a grant, so, versus a donation. Okay. Um, and then, I also, so their line item, which I don't see reflected in our budget, um, is 83, the Ridge at 38 is $83,000, um, and that's a line item separate from their $160,000 Ridge at 38 events, and they're also, it's also separate from their Live Local Wheat Ridge. So can you explain what, um, so I see like the banners and the, do, do they replace their banners each and every year, to the $25,000?
No, no, when, when they're needed, yeah, um, and, um, for different events.
So, yeah, 'cause I mean, we've allocated $25,000 for the last four years, and...
Well, first, first few years, those banners lasted about a day when the wind came through, and they got, they re-engineered them, and I think they're, they're working finally. Um, and yeah, I, I, I can't say if they need to re, if they need that much every year to replace banners, I don't know if, you know, at this point, it's, it's pretty consistent on what banners we have for most of our events. If somebody else from the community wants to put a banner up, they pay, they pay for it, but these are for Ridge Fest, for the holiday celebration, the...
The Ridge at 38, yeah.
Yeah, hallway. Um, but yeah, so the, the 83,000 you're mentioning, um, they, that's a lump sum of, of all these Ridge at 38 Plan implementation. So again, these are things that came out of, um, the 38th Avenue Plan to Market 38th Avenue, the banners, Leadership Committee, marketing materials, and, and their, their website, um, and it's explained a little bit more in their memo here.
So it's the Ridge at 38 Plan implementation?
Yes.
That's the total, $83,000?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then, so my last big hoopla with this budget is the $22,500 allocated to marketing and positioning tours. Um, in their explanation, they say that it's the Mid-Century and Modern Tour, Welcome to Wheat Ridge Tour, and Explore Wheat Ridge Tour, um, none of which have been planned or have happened in the year 2018. Um, so I don't know, they estimate $10,000 out of that, um, estimated $10,000 out of the $20,000, um, that was asked of last year. And, I, I've looked at their calendar, and the Mid-Century Modern Tour is not on the calendar, they have not had either of the bus tours. Okay, so, so do, do we not need to give that to them every year? 'Cause I don't understand why they're asking for $22,500. Um, is that just because they're planning on doing it next year, as opposed...
No, they ro, they rotate, every year they do a different type of tour. Um, so one, one year they do the Mid-Century Modern Tour, the next, the next they do these, the Garden Tour, um, the Garden Tour is, they didn't list it on here, but that's one of the tours, I think that comes out of this. So they rotate those, but then they also do the Wheat Ridge, the Explore Wheat Ridge Tour for new residents, and the, uh, Welcome to Wheat Ridge Tour, I think for, for Realtors and businesses.
I don't, I don't remember that being...
I don't know if they did anything this year or not, and it might've been 'cause of the staffing, um, I can't answer that question if they did them or not, I don't, don't know. Ginny, do you know? You're not on the board, are you?
Pretty sure they did the Welcome to Wheat Ridge Tour, I'm not sure if they did the Realtor Tour this last year.
So I attended the last Welcome to Wheat Ridge, and it was last year, September of last year, 2017.
Well, and you see, they're only estimating to spend 10,000 this year?
This year, yeah.
So, um, so obviously they're not doing them all, um, this year.
So I was gonna ask if you know what that was allocated towards this year?
I don't...
Since none of them are on the calendar.
Yeah, I, I, I can't tell you right now, I don't know, I can find out.
Alright. So I just, I think that a lot of the programs, especially the increase in, um, the proposed budget or the proposed ask of Local Works is kind of overlapping, and I think that if we kinda tighten their budget up a little bit, um, especially when it comes to community, um, communications and engagement, uh, as well as maybe some of the banners and, uh, events themselves, uh, I think that we can allocate some more money elsewhere. Um, I was also gonna see if you know the cost of the overtime staffing for Ridge at 38 events?
For, for Wheat Ridge staff, city Wheat Ridge staff?
Yeah, I mean, 'cause like it's, it's, it's outlined for the Carnation Festival, and I just didn't know if...
Yeah, we don't, Carnation Festival is, is the biggest expense.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
The Ridge Fest, Ridge Fest, I don't, I don't believe it's, it's, we have any overtime, it's just staff that's on, on...
On-site.
On-site, or on, that's working that weekend. Do you have some overtime? Okay, Police Department has a little bit of overtime. It's not nearly as much as, as the Carnation Festival. Um, Parks is very minimal, too, and Public Works is very minimal. Carnation Festival is a huge impact, so it's just absorbed in our, our general fund overtime budgets.
But I, I just, I just wanna make a comment about some things that have kind of been mentioned, uh, at the Carnation Festival Board meetings here and there, and that I think that it would be wise for us as a council, or prudent for the city to consider. Um, one of the biggest costs to any kind of event planning is our facilities, um, and a lot of that is the tents that we rent each and every year. Um, I think it would be beneficial for the city to, uh, purchase, to own tents that would be able to be used at the Ridge at 38 events, as well as the Carnation Festival. Um, it'd be awesome if it was labeled with the city logo, um, and kinda just give us a little bit more ownership of that. We would maybe incur some more costs at setup and teardown, but I'd much prefer to pay our staff to do that than continually have to seek out good facilities, um, organizations to incur those costs. I know that facilities is a really big issue as far as we, um, see in event planning, and that's one of the biggest costs for the Carnation Festival, and I'm assuming that it's probably a pretty major cost for Local Works as well.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Just a couple of items. One is, uh, to, to talk about something you mentioned. Uh, I asked the Housing Authority if they wanted me to ask for money to replace the housing loan program that, that, that Local Works, uh, gave up, and I got no support. I'm, I'm grinding my teeth when I say this, but I got no support from them. Uh, now something else. I really do think that we turned the Environmental Sustainability Committee into orphans. They, they put in a lot of time, they worked really hard, they were great people, and their suggestions are valuable suggestions, and I think we would be remiss if we did not, um, follow up on some of their suggestions. So I would like to ask for consensus that we, um, give them the Phase Two budget plus $7,500, which would go to support for the, um, for homes, for the Excel Home Energy Squad evaluations. Uh, that would be just a supplement to, uh, what Excel charges. Excel charges $75. Um, if we paid, uh, let's say $35 of that, uh, and hopefully get Excel to bill it, we could, uh, maybe encourage some of our folks to, um, utilize that service. So what I'm asking for is $25,500. Can I have a consensus for that?
Can we have some discussion on it first?
Um, yeah, we could have a little discussion. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. I'm totally against giving any money out to the Sustainable, Sustainability Committee this year. Um, I expressed some of those opinions earlier. Uh, there's a lot of issues that are going on in, in our state right now with sustainability, and it all gets back to some other issues. One is, um, public service itself. I mean, we're, been told we have to have a lot of respect for public circus. I don't think so. Pardon me, that's Excel. Public circus is an old holdover from public service from when I was in construction. Uh, let me just read a, a piece here about public, or Excel. "On the issue of wasting the investment by retiring Rawhide Power Plant's Unit 1 early, in a previous column, I stated it would cost $1 billion to $1.5 billion to replace the coal unit at Rawhide. I was a little off. Utility experts tell me it would only cost $1 billion to $1.25 billion." I mentioned a couple of weeks, or maybe a month or two ago, that, um, Public Service, Excel, had this plan to close some coal-fired plants, early. They have two perfectly good coal-fired plants that were some of the cleanest units in the country, and they want to retire them early and waste that money so that they can go to renewables. Even the PUC said that by monetary, common sense standards, it made no sense, but the PUC covered it by saying, "Oh, but there's some intrinsic value." This is all part of what we're, what we see when we get into this green, sustainable issue. Um, as a, for instance, um, they want $4,000 here to promote waste reduction among residents. Well, hopefully we can do that without having to pay, uh, for a program to, uh, promote waste reduction among residents. I mean, I would hope that many of our residents are already savvy enough to figure if they can save some dollars by doing waste reduction, they will do that on their own. Um, they wanna, want to, uh, have $4,000 here, and what a, part of what they wanna do is monitor water quality in Clear Creek. I'll bet you there's already five state and federal agencies that monitor water quality in our creek, in Clear Creek. Um, create a green business promotional program, $2,000. I don't think that's what we need to do as a city right now. One of our speakers today mentioned about how Denver has their green program and green roofs, and she forgot to mention that Denver is also backing off on that program 'cause it's not working, and they ran into so many problems, they've had to take giant steps backwards with it. I just don't see that we need to have the birth of another bureaucracy in this city, and that's exactly what it's gonna be. It's just another bureaucracy, just like 2020, that started out... It's just another bureaucracy, just like 2020, that started out, was supposed to be self-sustainable in a short amount of time, and we're still paying them a half a million dollars a year. That's my opinion on it.
Thank you. Mr. Pond?
Just a clarification, I think we had brought this up last time we talked about it. I don't, I agree with the twenty-five thousand, I agree with it as a budget, a budget amount to pursue the recommendations that were offered up by this, by this committee. I think we already discussed the fact that it, that it probably isn't set up right now, or shouldn't be handing twenty-five thousand dollars to a committee necessarily, but for us to budget it, and as a council, for us to be able to take the recommendations from that committee, hopefully keep them engaged and panel, but allow us then to put the money forward in the best way possible, and I think that answers a lot of the questions about, obviously, not being redundant and not pushing that money to things that don't make sense, and for us to have, to be engaged with it all along, I think that we should. So I, if, if Mr. Fitzgerald would agree to that, essentially, that slight modification of the consensus...
I, I accept that as a friendly...
That would be, that would be where I would, I would support.
And I would like to go and let you know that I've agreed with the Environmental Sustainability Committee. They were set up as a mayor's task force or committee, if you will, and I've agreed to go ahead for 2019 and continue them under the auspices of the mayor. So I'm ready, willing, and able to act as a number real for that. Mr. Ann?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I support this, and I supported this from the beginning, and I think we need to be mindful of what we're all doing in our community. We are behind Arvada-Lakewood, Denver-Golden, and I think that they were really modest in what they were asking for, I think twenty-five thousand five hundred, to include that in the budget. We're having a say, oversight, we're participating in this, but we also asked them to come back with a tear, and they came back with a tear, Phase Two, and put in a lot of time and effort, and I want to see this move forward. A little disappointed that we didn't go with a coordinator who could help facilitate some of these things and help the committee, so I hope we can look at maybe doing that in the future, because I think it's important to do.
Thank you very much. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the outset, I'd just like to thank all the committee members once more for their time and commitment in volunteering to put all this together. That being said, to suggest that we're going to spend money on environmental sustainability to then issue biannual mailers or other paper materials out to the citizens to tell them how and what to do with respect to environmental sustainability is laughable, because if we're going to be preaching, we need to be walking the walk as a city, as a city government. And so when we start talking about city subsidized grants to provide rain barrels, the city government should have rain barrels established on every one of their properties prior to telling the residents that they should install them on their properties. Back when I was a young Boy Scout, I received the Environmental Science Merit Badge, and one of the requirements of that was to identify ten ways in our home that we could reduce, reuse, or recycle, and then practice those for a seven-day period. In this recommendations, there's very little that's required of the city government to do with respect to practicing what we're preaching, and that's what I'm most concerned about with respect to this budget, is we're spending the majority of this budget going out and telling everybody else what to do, but with respect to what the city is doing and what our departments are doing on an individual department level, it's really focused outward versus focused inward. And if we were to spend the first step in encouraging environmental sustainability in our city on what our city staff can do and what our city government can do, that, I think, would go a lot further than issuing postcards like this out to citizens. And what they're going to do is throw it in the trash. That just makes no sense to me. So I would encourage us to rework this, to only focus on those steps that the city itself can do to become more environmentally friendly, more environmentally sustainable, and then we can use those examples to educate our citizens on how they can do that themselves. But I wouldn't want to support something that is counter to environmental sustainability, and that's what's being proposed here.
Thank you very much. Ms. Dozeman?
I would echo those thoughts. Number six in our SMART goals is Wheat Ridge is committed to environmental stewardship, but it's to create a sustainability committee to set priorities for the city, and I would really like for some of those priorities to create a culture within our departments. I wouldn't mind having those be instilled in our values in the bureaucracies that are already existing, but I have a really hard time with maintaining a special committee that isn't appointed and approved by the city council, and we're giving eighteen thousand dollars, and now we're due to ask for twenty-five thousand five hundred in order to implement some of these, some of these goals that I feel we could implement into the existing departments and organizations that we already have, as opposed to creating a whole other bureaucracy that is a special committee with funds behind them. I really like the PIE program idea for the Excel Partners in Energy. I think that that would be wonderful, and I think that evaluating as a city, I know that when we were doing the Anderson Park renovation project, it did come up about ways in which the Anderson building could be more sustainable, and I know that that takes money, but I think that, like Mr. Urban has said, it's really difficult for us to impose regulations and impose any, any kind of values to our public when we are not, we are not living those ourselves as a government agency.
Just remind council, we are living some of those. We do have a plan that we put together over the last several years, and maybe some new council, maybe you haven't had the fortune to see the presentation, but Joyce Manwaring led that charge, and we've had a staff of, we had a committee of staff members from every department that looked at and provided recommendations on what the city government could do to address sustainability issues, and we have a whole plan that's put together, it's on the city's website. It was presented to this committee. We didn't have the capacity as city employees to take it further, to take it to a community sustainability plan, which is why Joyce J. put together that last committee, and the mayor is suggesting that we continue with. You know, Joyce could speak to it if you want, but there's many recommendations on, we have idling policies for our vehicles, recycling policies, we've done energy audits on all of our buildings, so we have done a lot in-house. Are we doing enough? Probably not, but there is a plan in place, and we've done quite a bit.
Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to address this to the committee itself. If you haven't figured it out by now, this is kind of a hot button for me. And so I appreciate the work that you've done, but in my mind, this committee was established as an advisory committee to assist the council and the city in accomplishing some goals. And here we are, you came back and asked for eighteen thousand dollars to do some things, which isn't advisory anymore, but we haven't even established that we're going to put that in the budget yet, and already we have suggestions to raise that to more money. And that is where I really become upset when we kind of throw caution to the wind and chase some rainbows a little bit. I appreciate the effort that everyone put into that work, but it's my position that it's an advisory committee, it was created that way, and that's what we need to keep in mind when it comes to budget issues. Thank you, committee.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppie.
Keeping in mind that this is not monies that will be spent unless the, unless the work is done, and that it's more like a marker in our budget to say we have this, and we won't have to come back and ask for it later, I would like to ask Mr. Fitzgerald to ask for his consensus again.
I renew my request for consensus.
Okay, the consensus is on the table, we've had the discussion, it's time to raise your hands or not. One, two, three, four, five. We have consensus to put twenty-five point five thousand dollars into the budget to get the Sustainability Committee kicked off. Let's give them an opportunity to have some funding and see what they can do besides advisory work, to see what kind of, what kind of results they can bring to the city, because we need to have something going on. Ms. Davis?
And again, it's our understanding that those projects would still come to the council.
That, that's a great idea, certainly.
Like, for instance...
You know, I think we need to have buy-in for what we're doing, and I think, I think these committee members will put together viable, viable programs and viable costs to have it done. Mr. Matthews?
I have a question. Generally, when you want to have a budget item and add to the budget, you have to figure out where the money's coming from and get a line item. Have we thought of that yet? Where's the money coming from, and what line item is it going to be?
Ms. Hoppie?
Well, we are currently at nineteen percent, and we can take it down to seventeen percent, and then I'm sure that there will be some requests for taking some money out of places. I have one that I'll be asking later.
Right now, we've been at this for a little over two and a half hours. If we're going to continue along this line, we're going to need to take a ten-minute break. So we're going to recess for ten minutes. Thank you.[1242.58]
Thank you. I'm just gonna kind of bring back some general comments and perhaps hit a couple of the specific things that have been raised previously. First, I thank everyone who's put time into the budget. It's a lot of work and it's a heavy book and there's a lot of detail and I appreciate it always and I know we end up, you know, really getting engaged with it, which I think is good and the point. And it's obviously a testament to the amount of work and passion and care that's been put into it on the staff side and certainly, you know, that's and we're also equally passionate about it. I'm gonna just broadly say a couple of things and then try to make some suggestions on some of the things that have been discussed. I think one of the greatest kind of messages inside of this budget is the elevation of our city. I mean, that we are seeing a whole bunch of things occurring inside of this budget. Increased revenues, yes, increased expenses, but things like, you know, millions of dollars of bond and, you know, investment into our community. So, we ought to be pausing for a second and celebrating that at a general level because it's, you know, we have sat here and hoped for this day, I think, to be able to talk about, you know, these type of dollars and this type of investment in our city. At that, you know, staying at that for a minute, I would say that there's been a couple of discussions about the FTEs that are as one item that have been represented in this budget. I support it as it's stated. I think we could, and, you know, I also support ideas like the sustainability position as well, but I would pause and say that, like, first, I wanna stop where we're at from a staff recommendation and support that inside of a balanced budget and say that, again, it goes to the, you know, if you look at the justification for it, it's about the level that we've raised our community to either by putting in new services, literally annexing places that didn't exist and put them online, or parks that didn't exist and putting them online, and services that our citizens have become, you know, come to expect. And I do believe that it's important for us to stay on top of the curve and I know that we have been behind it at times. And as painful as it is to see an increase in a budget, it's, I believe, more painful to sit here and realize that we're behind the curve on especially services that people, our neighbors that we represent, are expecting or demanding in our community. I see this as a fair response to that and so, at least, you know, just to kind of put that one point down, I support the FTEs that are considered here. I support the trajectory moving forward. And if we can get to a place where we can look at the sustainability, you know, coordinator, I would support that as well, but I don't wanna pull back from what's been represented inside of here. It's been mentioned, and I'll just kind of put real numbers to it, that this budget is a balanced budget, but it reflects having reserves, prudent reserves of $6.8 million, which is nineteen point four percent. And our recommended prudent reserve level is seventeen percent. That's a difference of $800,000. So, this is a balanced budget that actually has in it $800,000 of room for us to work if we wanna take it. I see no reason why we wouldn't take it. Our published prudent reserve is seventeen percent. We've said that and we've talked about it before. We've never talked about raising it. If anything, we've talked about lowering it. So, seventeen is not a number that we have not debated and cared about and thought about. Inside of that, or apart from that, are several hundred thousand dollars that are not inserted into this budget. Patrick went over them. $500,000 for bond, you know, for, you know, debt reimbursement that was likely to happen in nineteen. And if it doesn't, I would assume it was gonna happen immediately in twenty, but that's a half million dollars that's out there. And three hundred to five hundred or six hundred thousand dollars of tax revenues that are anticipated when these projects come online, but again, are not reflected in revenues in this budget. So, if you look at that, there's probably a million and a half, you know, all told, but eight hundred thousand for sure because we have the option right now to say no, hold the reserve at a lesser amount than nineteen point four because our published rate is seventeen. And we know that there's some buffer and some, you know, some conservatism in this revenue projection that's accounting for several other hundred thousand. So, in summary, I support the balanced budget that's being presented. I support the content that's in it. Like I supported the twenty-five thousand for the sustainability, I would support the twenty for Carnation Festival. I would support the forty-five for the Wheat Ridge Business District. I know there's some discussions of other trims and that's fine, but the truth is that I think we, that we have it, we have it within this, within this large macro-level budget profile to take, to bring in and be responsive to some of the requests that came to us through this budget process, including tonight. And yes, we can be, we can manage some of these other things, but the truth is that we have an opportunity within this budget to actually maintain an aggressive investment in our community that meets the aggressive growth and development that's going on. And I think that we should do that. So, I know there's gonna be some other discussions that go on, but I would encourage us to, at some point here, call the question, reduce our, reduce the reserves to a level that meets the request for some of these other monies to come into our budget and move forward.
Thank you. Well, let's move forward with an eye to sort of making good decisions and making them in a reasonable time fashion. Ms. Davis?
Okay, so I hope this is just a quick one. I won't drag on. So, I was going to ask the council, and this is just a small reduction, but I think a reasonable one, still supporting the vision and goals of our Citizen Review Committee, but, and I know they were a bit over budget from where they were in 2018, but they have the Action Center that they gave three thousand, but as a council, we gave the Action Center twenty thousand. So, I'm just wondering if that's something that we would consider possibly just giving the Action Center the twenty thousand and taking that off of the Citizen Review Committee list because we're giving them, as a council, we gave them twenty thousand.
Ms. Hoppe?
I guess I would say that that was two different asks and so, one of them was like the one-time ask and we have the money for the three thousand dollars and we know that they're in a place, a really, a really difficult place and so, I wouldn't necessarily wanna take that money away from them.
Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm, I just feel that maybe we might be setting a bad precedent in having our outside agency committee allocate money to certain organizations and I know they spend a lot of time scrutinizing the asks of that money and then have an organization be awarded that money, but then turn around and ask the city council of an even larger amount of money that we awarded and maybe the outside agency committee, had they known that information, would've allocated that three thousand dollars elsewhere to maybe an organization within Wheat Ridge. So, that's my biggest concern with that.
Ms. Duran?
The twenty thousand was allocated for what exactly?
That was sort of a one-time, they're hurting right now. So, that was sort of a one-time ask. It was, the county put a challenge out there so they would match us dollar-for-dollar on that, so it had a better earning power. So, that's different than the annual and I believe we fund the Action Center on an annual basis with our community grant giving. So, that was a distinct one-time occurrence.
Separate from the three thousand?
Separate from the three thousand.
From the outside agency?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right.
So, you know, okay. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to talk a little bit about Thirty-Eighth Avenue and Forty-Fourth Avenue. It appears as though we're spending about one point, or $1,173,000 on various Thirty-Eighth Avenue-related expenses, whether it be the events on Thirty-Eighth, the Ridge at Thirty-Eighth, the implementation plan, plan implementation. And so, if you look at the 2017 sales tax figures, that expense of 1.1 million is roughly sixty-one percent of the sales tax revenues from Thirty-Eighth Avenue. And then, as you look at Forty-Fourth, we're spending less than seven percent of that sales tax on Forty-Fourth as you look at the income and sales tax from Forty-Fourth. And so, I guess as we look at this, obviously I have some concerns about the spending of $160,000 on Ridge at Thirty-Eighth Events, but that's not really the biggest piece of the pie here. The biggest piece is the $900,000 for the green and I don't think anything's changed here. We're not owning that land, correct? We're not purchasing that land.
We haven't had final discussions with the school district on that. They're interested in still moving forward, but the last time we spoke to them, they wanted to maintain ownership.
So, I, you know, I just don't see the benefit and the reasoning behind fixing up someone else's property without any kind of equal remuneration from the school district to that effect. If the school district wanted to go halves on us to help develop that, that would be a different discussion, but as it stands, spending $900,000 to fix up the green when you look at the economic vitality of Thirty-Eighth, it's doing very well in certain areas and could do better in other areas, but the fact is, is that Forty-Fourth is doing even better without this continual dump of cash onto Thirty-Eighth. And so, I would like us to consider moving some of the monies that we're putting in Thirty-Eighth onto Forty-Fourth and see how we can benefit Forty-Fourth even more so than it has in the past because it does feel like the redheaded stepchild and that it doesn't get the love that Thirty-Eighth does, but yet it outperforms as it relates to the sales tax increase that we see on Forty-Fourth. So, I just don't see why we're spending the amount of money that we are on Thirty-Eighth because we're not seeing that rate of return. So, I would ask us to reconsider the, at least the green project, if not some of these other elements on Thirty-Eighth.
Ms. Dozeman?
I would agree with those statements. I think that a lot of the residents feel on Forty-Fourth Avenue or in that vicinity and in those neighborhoods feel like they've kind of been left out of this redevelopment and revitalization programs that we've implemented throughout the city. Thirty-Eighth Avenue gets hundreds of thousands of dollars each year. You know, we see this Ridge at Thirty-Eighth. Most of the local works budget is completely allocated towards Thirty-Eighth Avenue and we've given them a lot of money over the years to market that Ridge at Thirty-Eighth and host those events on Thirty-Eighth Avenue. And I know that we have like the Shop Forty-Fourth and we also have the Twenty-Ninth Avenue Business District or kind of?
Marketplace.
Marketplace, yes, thank you. And I just feel as if those kind of get neglected while we continue to bolster and pour money into Thirty-Eighth Avenue. I definitely think that we can kind of share the love in that respect. I also do have a lot of concerns with the green, the $900,000. For some reason, I read that at $90,000 and I thought we were getting a heck of a deal and I go back and no, especially if we are not maintaining any sort of ownership. I would hate to see us spend $900,000 on a property that we do not own and that we do not, do we have a first right of refusal in that?
Again, we haven't had those final negotiations with the school district. You know, things may have changed. There's new administration. I think that, I don't know, Joyce, do you have the most recent conversations with Tim Reed? Did he give any comments on that portion? No?
No, I would just say that we have examples where we have invested in parks on school district properties and we do an IGA, intergovernmental agreement with them so that we can provide services to our citizens. For example, the baseball fields behind that school are, that property is owned by the school district, but the city invested in it to put the lights and fields in and then we maintain them. So, we have some different kinds of arrangements for joint use of land.
I think the way to, you know, the way to look at the green is really another type of park or gathering place for our community. And I mean, we, you know, we've got, we've got still, I believe, a vision out there to where Thirty-Eighth Avenue is a main street in the city that where a lot of activity happens. And I, you know, I'm a business owner on Twenty-Ninth Avenue and I certainly understand implicitly the debate about the, you know, the other numbered streets or the other, you know, Young Field or other streets that happen and have commercial corridors, but I think you need to sort of look at some of the vision, the visioning that we've done. Ms. Duran?
I was just gonna say, if we're gonna spread some of that over to Forty-Fourth, we should on Twenty-Ninth. Some sidewalks or bike lanes would be nice down Twenty-Ninth Avenue.
Ms. Hoppe?
If my memory serves me correctly, the first time we had those conversations with the school about improving the green, they had discussed that if they were to sell that property, we would get a first right of refusal on it and that there was an agreement in, like, the ability to use it and when and whatnot, times and all of that stuff, there was an agreement. But, you know, kind of like Bud said, it's creating the, kind of the town center and that green is kind of, is the only green space on Thirty-Eighth Avenue in that main area and so, it really has become the gathering spot. As far as the sales tax revenue reports, I just need to ask Zach, were you referring to the ones that we got from the treasurer? Because if that's the case, the Forty-Fourth Avenue was shared into Young Field and the Thirty-Eighth Avenue was only shared into Wadsworth. And so, they're not super apples-to-apples because they're not the entire street on those reports. And so, that would skew the numbers a little bit on that. And so, I just, I support putting some investment into that green and kind of moving that vision down the road finally.
Mr. Matthews and then Ms.?
I would just remind the councilwoman that those were based on percentages, so whether it's this long or that long, Forty-Fourth increased by fifty-eight percent. We're not talking dollars. So, that whole area increased by fifty-eight percent whereas Thirty-Eighth Avenue has not. And that takes away a little bit of that skewing concept.
Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, just getting back to the redevelopment of the green, in the event that it is still a school and it's owned by the district, I would be worried about us as a city creating inequity and kind of bridging that division that we have already had between our elementary schools. Like, we do student-based budgeting, so we literally compete for students for money per the district and investing $900,000 into one school in our community versus all of the rest, I would have a really difficult time supporting that. I know that it's a gathering place. I know that it's a hub for the Thirty-Eighth Avenue events, but that really is putting $900,000, so close to a million dollars into one school in our community and I would really, really be hesitant to do that.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I'd like to echo what Ms. Hoppe said. This, the green is intended to be the center gathering, gathering space for the city of Wheat Ridge and the fact is, it already is. All of our events are there, our Christmas tree lighting is there, our Ridge at Thirty-Eighth is there, the criteria is there. It is already our center, central gathering place. So, I think, as, my memory is, we had a signed agreement with the school district under our previous administration.
We have a signed MOU, which allows us to part, to use the space for our current events and other events, yeah.
And I can't imagine the school district doing something negative to that space because they're gonna get something out of this too. They're gonna get an amphitheater out of it. So, this is really? It appears as though we're spending about 1 million 173,000 on various 38th Avenue-related expenses, whether it be the events on 38th, the Ridge at 38th, the implementation plan, plan imitation. And so if you look at the 2017 sales tax figures, that expense of 1.1 million is roughly 61% of the sales tax revenues from 38th Avenue. And then, as you look at 44th, we're spending less than 7% of that sales tax on 44th as you look at the income and sales tax from 44th. And so I guess as we look at this, obviously I have some concerns about the spending of $160,000 on Ridge at 38th events, but that's not really the biggest piece of the pie here. The biggest piece is the $900,000 for the green. And I don't think anything's changed here. We're not owning that land, correct? We're not purchasing that land.
We haven't had final discussions with the school district on that. They're interested in still moving forward, but the last time we spoke to them, they wanted to maintain ownership.
So, you know, I just don't see the benefit and the reasoning behind fixing up someone else's property without any kind of equal remuneration from the school district to that effect. If the school district wanted to go halves on us to help develop that, that would be a different discussion. But as it stands, spending $900,000 to fix up the green when you look at the economic vitality of 38th, it's doing very well in certain areas and could do better in other areas. But the fact is, is that 44th is doing even better without this continual dump of cash onto 38th. And so I would like us to consider moving some of the monies that we're putting in 38th onto 44th and see how we can benefit 44th even more so than it has in the past because it does feel like the redhead's stepchild and that it doesn't get the love that 38th does. But yet it outperforms as it relates to the sales tax increase that we see on 44th. So I just don't see why we're spending the amount of money that we are on 38th because we're not seeing that rate of return. So I would ask us to reconsider the, at least the green project, if not some of these other elements on 38th.
Ms. Dozeman.
I would agree with those statements. I think that a lot of the residents feel on 44th Avenue or in that vicinity and in those neighborhoods feel like they've kind of been left out of this redevelopment and revitalization programs that we've implemented throughout the city. 38th Avenue gets hundreds of thousands of dollars each year. You know, we see this Ridge at 38th. Most of the local works budget is completely allocated towards 38th Avenue. And we've given them a lot of money over the years to market that Ridge at 38th and host those events on 38th Avenue. And I know that we have like the Shop 44th and we also have the 29th Avenue Business District or kind of...
Marketplace.
Marketplace, yes, thank you. And I just feel as if those kind of get neglected while we continue to bolster and pour money into 38th Avenue. I definitely think that we can kind of share the love in that respect. I also do have a lot of concerns with the green, the $900,000. For some reason, I read that at $90,000 and I thought we were getting a heck of a deal and I go back and no. Especially if we are not maintaining any sort of ownership. I would hate to see us spend $900,000 on a property that we do not own and that we do not... Do we have a first right of refusal in that?
Again, we haven't had those final negotiations with the school district. You know, things may have changed. There's new administration. I think that, I don't know, Joyce, do you have the most recent conversations with Tim Reed? Did he give any comments on that portion? No?
No, I would just say that we have examples where we have invested in parks on school district properties and we do an IGA, intergovernmental agreement with them so that we can provide services to our citizens. For example, the baseball fields behind that school are, that property is owned by the school district, but the city invested in it to put the lights and fields in and then we maintain them. So we have some different kinds of arrangements for joint use of land.
I think the way to, you know, the way to look at the green is really another type of park or gathering place for our community. And I mean, we, you know, we've got, we've got still, I believe, a vision out there to where 38th Avenue is a main street in the city that where a lot of activity happens. And I, you know, I'm a business owner on 29th Avenue and I certainly understand implicitly the debate about the, you know, the other numbered streets or the other, you know, Youngfield or other streets that happen and have commercial corridors. But I think you need to sort of look at some of the visioning that we've done. Mr. Ann.
I was just going to say, if we're going to spread some of that over to 44th, we should on 29th. Some sidewalks or bike lanes would be nice down 29th Avenue.
Ms. Hoppe.
If my memory serves me correctly, the first time we had those conversations with the school about improving the green, they had discussed that if they were to sell that property, we would get a first right of refusal on it and that there was an agreement in like the ability to use it and when and whatnot, times and all of that stuff, there was an agreement. But, you know, kind of like, Bud said, it's creating the kind of the town center and that green is kind of, is the only green space on 38th Avenue in that main area. And so it really has become the gathering spot. As far as the sales tax revenue reports, I just need to ask Zach, were you referring to the ones that we got from the treasurer? Because if that's the case, the 44th Avenue was shared into Youngfield and the 38th Avenue was only shared into Wadsworth. And so they're not super apples-to-apples because they're not the entire street on those reports. And so that would skew the numbers a little bit on that. And so I just, I support putting some investment into that green and kind of moving that vision down the road finally.
Mr. Matthews and then Ms.
I would just remind the councilwoman that those were based on percentages. So whether it's this long or that long, 44th increased by 58%, we're not talking dollars. So that whole area increased by 58% whereas 38th Avenue has not. And that takes away a little bit of that skewing concept.
Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just getting back to the redevelopment of the green. In the event that it is still a school and it's owned by the district, I would be worried about us as a city creating inequity and kind of bridging that division that we have already had between our elementary schools. Like we do student-based budgeting, so we literally compete for students for money per the district. And investing $900,000 into one school in our community versus all of the rest, I would have a really difficult time supporting that. I know that it's a gathering place. I know that it's a hub for the 38th Avenue events, but that really is putting $900,000, so close to a million dollars into one school in our community. And I would really, really be hesitant to do that.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
I'd like to echo what Ms. Hoppe said. This, the green is intended to be the center gathering, gathering space for the city of Wee Ridge. And the fact is, it already is. All of our events are there. Our Christmas tree lighting is there. Our Ridge at 38th is there. The criteria is there. It is already our center, central gathering place. So I think, as, my memory is, we had a signed agreement with the school district under a previous administration.
We have a signed MOU which allows us to part, to use the space for our current events and other events, yeah.
And I can't imagine the school district doing something negative to that space because they're going to get something out of this too. They're going to get an amphitheater out of it. So this is really for us. It's not for them, although they also benefit.
I think, I wanted, you raised an interesting, an interesting issue about the equity amongst the schools in this, in the city and our participation with that. I would, I would sort of argue that the development that we did at the Ridge at 38th, that really was not a pro-school benefit. I think it's really not like we're making an investment in the school itself or in the facilities at the school. It's actually sort of really a city benefit, but go ahead.
Yeah, but we are investing in one school's property and we are allocating a whole lot of money in order to revitalize their space. And that's a matter of, you know, really spotlighting and highlighting their school. If we're having events, I mean primarily on 38th Avenue. We have performances in the park and then we have the Carnation Festival off 44th Avenue in Anderson Park. But other than that, the majority of the events are at 38th Avenue. And I would venture to argue that one of the biggest benefactors of those programs, and especially if we allocate $900,000 into creating this wonderful space for one school in particular, would be Stevens Elementary.
You know, you never heard, you never hear "going to the green" to Stevens Elementary. You know, that's all I'll say is it's at the green. It's never at Stevens. To do it for the budget? You got another budget question? Mr. Urban.
Thank you. This question may be for Joyce. In the parks budget, or at least the rec center budget, indicates that the marketing line item has been zeroed out. Has that been transferred to someplace else or what's the strategy there?
The marketing budget in the past has been split between the general fund and the recreation center fund. And based on our marketing program, being for the entire department, that budget was moved to the general fund budget in its entirety. 100% marketing is now in the general fund budget under Recreation Administration.
And so more broadly, I guess for Patrick, as it relates to these efforts around communication, marketing, outreach, it seems like we have a lot of silos within the city relative to those activities. And I haven't been able to get a number to it, but it seems like we have a variety of different individuals or roles that try to accomplish the same thing. Is there anything we can do to consolidate those efforts? I understand we're looking to increase the FDU for the digital communications specialists, but with the local works budget and now the environmental sustainability budget, it appears as though we have this going on in a variety of different places. I'd like to see how we can consolidate that.
Well, I think they're all working on distinct projects in marketing. Joyce's position, the marketing is marketing parks and rec events. Yeah, could the city PIO do that? I guess you could. But again, the city's PIO is working on police and more general community events. Sustainability Committee, I guess if you give them that money, you know, they're talking about sustainability projects. I believe all the projects are distinct and unique to who's working on them. But if you had suggestions, we'd take those. But I think they're pretty unique and separate.
Well, I guess, you know, the, just one specific issue is with respect to the environmental sustainability budget is that they're looking for money to do branding and logo design and whatnot. And we had the same thing for the 2E projects where we did branding and logo design for that. And I don't know that the city needs to be spending any more money on developing brands and logos and names for what we're already doing. But if we had a consolidated effort around marketing, communications and outreach, that sort of siloing wouldn't happen as much because under a traditional corporate structure, you wouldn't have 20 different logos. You would have one logo. And so that's what I'm concerned about is this continual, you know, birthing of new brands and new logos. Is there a style guide for the city relative to how these are to be developed?
Sure, we have a style, we have a style guide for the city's logo. Again, that's a unique logo for the city's organization. The Rec Center has a new brand. The Rec Center acts as a separate business from the city's government, which is part of their marketing effort. And, you know, different events have different audiences and different marketing efforts. You know, we get, we get a lot of criticism for not being transparent enough and not talking enough about what we're doing. So a lot of these efforts are helping with that, in my mind.
And I don't want to discourage us from being transparent or talking or bragging about what we're able to accomplish and being successful, but it just seems like we have the same function happening across multiple departments and within multiple organizations. And if only those people were to at least talk to one another or coordinate with one another as it relates to printing costs or what have you, that's where I think we're missing the boat.
Mr. Ann.
Thank you. I see in here that we have the retail marijuana fees, but not our tax revenue. Patrick, do you know what that is for 2018?
We're estimating about $750,000 total this year. The fees that you see that are line item out are the fees that we get from the state. We get a portion of the fees they generate. And then the local sales tax that are generated off our retail stores are just in our sales tax total line item. But we keep, we track that separately and I think we're estimating about $750,000 this year.
So that's rolled right over to our general fund, correct?
Yes, it's all in the general fund.
Okay. And have we estimated if we extend our hours from seven to 10, what we would be bringing in?
I believe I heard a comment from somebody at the last presentation that the industry believes 20%. I think maybe, Tim, you mentioned that comment?
Yeah, I don't have those figures with me, but I do have them. And we're going to, you know, that's on the agenda, I think, for next week.
Oh, okay.
And I will all bring those figures because I do have the figures.
That'd be great. Or if you could just email them over, that would be nice.
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dozeman.
All right, I have one comment and then a question. So one of the speakers tonight mentioned a community solar garden, which we do have in the budget. And so I just kind of wanted to make that known. And then, Patrick, I see on the local works budget that they were presented $10,000 last year for planning for the 2019 50th anniversary events gala. And they also asked for an additional $10,000 for next year. Can you tell me what they spent last year's $10,000 or this year's $10,000 on? And what they, or you proposed that they plan or pay for with that other $10,000?
Let's see. Was it in their memo?
Well, it says for the gala.
That's all it says. The detail, though, I was wondering. I can't tell you off the top of my head. You know, honestly, it's probably to pay for their staff time to participate in the planning efforts. I don't think there was any hard cost at this point, but they are participating in the planning committee. So it's probably to cover their staff time.
Okay. And so is the $60,000 allocated in the city's budget including this event? Or is this $10,000 wrapped up in that $60,000 or is it separate?
It's separate.
Okay. So we're proposing $70,000 specifically to 50th anniversary planning throughout the 2019 school, or school year. That parent hat sometimes comes out. So 2019 fiscal year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pond.
I'm going to come back to something I said and just try to offer up a consensus on a, on a general topic with a few subsets. We've already have consensus on $25,500 commitment to the Environmental Sustainability Committee recommendations. I have heard, and I just, if we can just, I can get someone to nod in confirmation, $20,000 that is being requested by the Carnation Festival and $45,000 requested by the Wee Ridge Business District. So for 90,500, I would ask for consensus to go ahead and approve those things with the associated reduction of our reserve funds, bringing us a little bit closer to 17. That doesn't get us anywhere near. That's just, that's just $100,000 of the 800. But at least doing that and taking those pieces of work.
Okay, that looks like a consensus.
Can I clarify that? I just want to make sure I got it right. You said 27 for, additional 27 for Carnation Festival and an additional $45,000 to...
20 for Carnation.
Oh, what, I'm sorry, what did I say?
You said 27.
Okay.
Is that how this works?
Consensus, yeah. Can I hear, an additional 20,000 to the Carnation Festival and an additional 45,000 to Wee Ridge Businesses.
On top, and then we already had consensus on the 25,500.
Yes, I got that.
But there was a question as to how we were, how we were accounting for that. And what we just agreed to is that it's, we're taking our 19.4% down by 90,500 against that.
Okay.
So I would like to make a motion to reduce local works budget by $85,500, bringing the total to 465,000 for their 2019 fiscal year.
Could you say those numbers again?
A consensus. Yeah, so I would like to make a consensus to decrease the local works budget by $85,500, bringing the total to 465,000 for next year, 2019.
That's less than what they spent in 2018.
So that's based on the reductions that we discussed. So we, so we proposed to reduce the business and home loans program from 80,000 to 50,000. We proposed to decrease the communications education outreach from 40,000 to 30,000. The marketing and positioning tours from 22,500 to 15,000. And the community engagement and communications from 50,000 to 30,000.
What, 50 to 30?
50,000 to 30,000, yes. And then the Ridge at 38th events from 160,000 to 150,000. And then the 38th Avenue Leadership Committee from 18,000 to 10,000.
Leah, I disagree with your communication engagement from 50 to 30. I would like to see it at least be at 40.
So we had discussed that because they spent 30 in 2018 and that they had marketing materials, digital media support, banners and lights, as well as the communications education outreach, that we would reduce that to the 2018 estimated cost of 30,000.
And we also discussed that the new director also talked about her ability for fund grants and the, her fundraising, that that was, she was going to step it up in that area so that we were going to give her the opportunity to do that as well. Since she said she was, that was her expertise. So that was the other area that we thought that she could shine possibly.
Mr. Fitzgerald, pardon me.
I have a question. Maybe Janice can answer this. Is the Wee Ridge Leadership Committee local businessman?
The 38th Avenue Leadership Committee is supposed to be 38th Avenue business owners on the corridor. It originally, when it very originally started, a lot of, it was basically anyone who was interested in being on it. However, in the last year, we had one meeting and four of us showed up and I was one of them.
I think the reason they were asking for more money was to reengage and try to get more efforts going.
I would, I would object to reducing that on the grounds that if it's not used, it can be returned. But it's important to me, I think, to have buy-in from business on 38th Avenue. You need to get people, you need to get the businesses involved in caring about 38th Avenue. And so for that reason, I consider that to be money well-spent and I object to, to reducing that. So I would like to amend your consensus to remove that from...
So I would just like to note that they estimated the $12,000 and that's all that they've spent 27, 20, that's all they were given in 2016, 2017, and all they spent in 2018 with the lack of engagement and direction of the committee itself. I don't feel as if it would be necessary to award them $18,000. I would, I would be okay with 12,000, but since the engagement isn't there, I think that that's a really important piece for anything to get off the ground. I think $10,000 is amenable.
Is it worth it in your mind to increase engagement from businessmen on 38th?
In places throughout the city other than 38th Avenue? Yes.
No, on 38th.
Well, I would say that we would do our city as a whole more of a benefit to spread that out. And if we're talking about a leadership committee that's dedicated to corridors other than 38th Avenue, then yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Along those same lines, Patrick, perhaps you can refresh me. Their HEAL program from Kaiser or whatever, wasn't that in the neighborhood? Do you recall how many dollars that was? I'm recalling 250,000, but that sounds...
Yeah, the grant they got, it was a three-year, three-year grant, I believe. It was for 250,000, I believe.
Okay. And then my question there then is, do we know how they've been spending that money and why are they coming back to us again for another 30,000 on top of that? But they presented that to us as a deal they could do without any additional cost to the city when they first got it.
Well, my understanding, I believe, if I remember, there was, there was a match required and the larger, larger match that they proposed for the grant, the better chances of getting the grant. So then they got a second grant also and it required a match too. And I think, I think that's the match to the grant.
How have they been spending their 250,000 or parts thereof that they've been getting? I mean, it's a volunteer organization, so where's the money going?
Yeah, it's, they're doing planning work on 38th Avenue. I can't tell exactly where the money has gone, but they did those pop-up events on 38th Avenue to raise awareness to pedestrian mobility issues on 38th Avenue.
I understand that, but how do you spend, you had volunteers come out to do that work. Where are they spending the 250,000?
The local works staff is getting paid to manage that grant, so...
So they added staff for that, right?
No, they didn't. I don't think they've added staff. They're paying their current local staff.
I remember specifically, there was a young lady, when I went to that meeting, that came on. They said, "This lady's going to, here's our new lady and she's going to do this grant program."
I can't answer that question for you. I don't know.
And I'm trying to figure out what one lady's going to do for three years to do some pop-ups at Parfit and 38th.
Mr. Ann.
Just to clarify, it's not as if the city writes a check to local works for $550,000, correct?
No, they send in reimbursables every month to be paid and we require invoices for that.
Right, thank you.
Ms. Dozeman.
I would just like to bring it back to my consensus of reducing the budget by $85,500 and bringing the total to 465,000.
Two, three, four. We don't have consensus on that. So we could be looking for some, some different...
Janice, do you have a different?
Different possibilities to see if we can get closer together, make a deal.
So some of the, some of the places where I think some money could be trimmed off would definitely be in like the building up business loan and a little bit off of the marketing and positioning tours because there are tours that aren't happening. And then a little bit off of the communication engagement, community engagement and communications. It was a $20,000 more ask. We could meet them halfway on that. The Ridge at 38th events was another $20,000 increase ask. We can meet them halfway on that. And then give them the original 12,000 for the Ridge at 38th Leadership Committee, which would take $60,000 off of their total budget, which would put them still at 490, which is over what they spent last year at 469.
Ms. Dozen.
So I feel like the reason we hired this new executive director is because of her expertise in fundraising and she even touted that when she came in to give her presentation. When we kind of had our side discussion, we, we noted that there's a whole lot of money going into communication, community engagement, outreach, marketing materials, digital media, and we kind of trimmed that down. So they did ask for fifty thousand dollars for the community engagement and communications, but they have only spent thirty thousand in twenty eighteen. And they are asking for Thirty-Eighth Avenue marketing materials to the tune of thirty thousand dollars and a digital media support for ten thousand dollars. And I think that we really should be encouraging them to use digital media as opposed to the paper flyers. You know, we are trying to go green, it sounds like. So I definitely think that taking, and, and, I mean, I discussed this issue at the last study session about how I feel like we are growing these events beyond the capacity of our resources. And the reason why these events are growing is because we market it to communities outside of Wheat Ridge and we draw more residents from outside Wheat Ridge, which than, than we do from within. And I agree that that's good to a point, but when you have citizens or people that are coming in and coming to these free events, but maybe not staying and spending the money because they go back to their hometowns closer to home, it, it just doesn't make sense to me to have that kind of money going to, specifically to outreach. So if you want to make a consensus, like somewhere in the middle.
So, you know, like I said, some of these places have, like I said, a thirty thousand dollar increase on the ask. And so, and the twenty thousand, which we could go with ten, twenty go with, meet them in the middle with ten. So total, it's sixty thousand dollars. So I would then make a consensus for us to fund them at four thousand nine hun, four hundred and ninety thousand five hundred dollars, which is a sixty thousand dollars less than their original ask. And that would be the lowest I would, the most I would take from them.
Specific line items or just lump sum?
Lump, lump sum. They can figure out where they need to spend the money.
So the, so the proposal on the table is consensus at four hundred and ninety thousand five hundred as an aggregate. Did I get the number right?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a discussion on that?
I mean, I would, I would support that as a, as a starting point, but I really would like to see what this new executive director is capable of. She sounds very confident in her abilities to fundraise and become more self-sustaining. And I've heard the board throw around ideas. And so I, I will support this consensus in the respect that I, I really hope to see them fundraise beyond this point for next year and maybe have these asks come down a little bit.
Is there a discussion on the consensus? Ms. Davis.
I, I'll, I'll support as well, but I, I also have the same challenge. And I also challenge a little bit the money that has been sent on, spent on that gala, because I've planned many a galas in my lifetime. And I know if ten thousand has been spent, I know what has been spent on. And if we, as a city, don't know what has been spent on, I, I struggle with that. It's either a down payment for the museum because we're having it there or something. So I do think we need more information on that because I struggle with the planning of a galas costing ten thousand dollars, because I'll do it for free and I throw a good party.
Ms. Duran, Ms. Davis. No, Ms.
Duran will work.
Duran.
I was gonna...
I, I was, I was right the first time, you know.
You were, you were. I was gonna say, I support this consensus. I think we need to give the new director some time to get her feet in. Krista's great. I worked with her at Jefferson Center for Mental Health when I was on the board there. So let's give her an opportunity to prove herself. And we have to also remember that we do have a population in Wheat Ridge that isn't digital and they rely on what they get in the mail. So we can't X them out of the picture either. So I do support this consensus.
Ms. Davis. Oh.
Which consensus are we supporting right now?
All right, right now, we have a consensus on the table for an aggregate amount for local works at four hundred and ninety thousand five hundred dollars.
No, four hundred and sixty-five thousand. Or no, I'm sorry. No, you're right.
Four hundred and ninety-five hundred. Do we have consensus on that? Keep 'em up. Okay, there, looks like we have consensus on that. Okay. Okay, so we've had, let's see, we got some money, some additional money for the Carnation Festival, Wheat Ridge Business District on the, on the loan programs and building up business. We have twenty-five point five on the sustainability. And we've, we've worked on the local works budget. What else would we like? Ms. Hoppy.
Just gonna go for it.
Go for it.
I'm just, I'm really hoping it'll go. But I would like to make a consensus to hire a sustainability and HEAL coordinator this year at part-time with the money that we've trimmed from local works and the additional monies we have in bringing us down to seventeen percent. I think we can afford it. And so I would like to ask for a consensus for that position. So it's a, the, the position that they were proposing to happen in two, two, twenty twenty of the sustainability HEAL coordinator, which is a halftime FTE, I would like that to happen this year or next year in twenty nineteen rather than wait until twenty twenty.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
Would you accept that as a consultant with a non-permanent job?
I think that our purpose is to have a permanent full-time person down the road. So I think that we should get them in and get their feet wet and get them running and, as part of our community so that we can eventually hire them as full-time down the road.
Ms. Duran.
I agree.
I agree. I mean, if we're gonna make the commitment, let's make the commitment. And if they're gonna invest their time, we need to let them know that we're supporting them and we're behind them.
Mr. Urban.
I guess, you know, some of the basic questions would be, who does this person report to? What type of roles and responsibilities and outcomes does that person have? It, it seems rather monumental just to suggest that we have a new position and without any of the legwork or background as it relates to who this person, not, not the individual, but what does this role accomplish for the city? And that's what I'm concerned about is while we've already dedicated a twenty-five thousand dollar amount to the Wheat Ridge Environmental Sustainability Committee, I would like to see outcomes and goals achieved under that committee. Then that would allow us to figure out what roles and responsibilities a sustainability coordinator would have in six months or twelve months. But to suggest that we're going to give the Wheat Ridge Environmental Sustainability Committee twenty-five grand and then also suggest a brand-new position without any legwork relative to where and how and what, it just, it seems a bit premature. So I, I would encourage us to stick with what we've already committed to the Wheat Ridge Environmental Sustainability Committee, allow that work to be accomplished, show the fruits of our labor, and then employ someone down the road to, to be involved in, in those activities moving forward. But to suggest that at this time, I, I think is a bit premature.
Ms. Dozen, you have your pen in the air.
Thank you. So I would agree with those thoughts. And my suggestion was going to be that because the Sustainability Committee, they pinpointed one of their biggest priorities as hiring a sustainability coordinator, that we either reallocate that twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars to that position or we give that to the Sustainability Committee.
Ms. Duran.
You know, most of these citizens that are on, on this committee have families and they work. And we need somebody who can lead that committee, somebody who can implement what we're trying to do. And if it's part-time and if there's criteria, you know, whatever we want to look for in this person, we can lay that out. But we need somebody who can have follow-through. And to ask our citizens who are already giving so much of their time to implement this is asking a lot. And this was a discussion when we first implemented this committee. There was conversation of having a director, somebody who could facilitate this. So I would agree that we need to have somebody who can implement this and somebody part-time permanent.
Ms. Hoppy.
I would assume as all positions in the city before they hire them, that they have a job description in, put together and that it's also, it's under the Parks and Rec Department. So we know that that would be who they would answer to. And, and we're saying that we'll allocate the money in the budget for a half-time, then I would assume their hours would be half-time. All of these are things that happen through kind of the department head and the HR before they hire somebody. So saying that I would like to hire someone doesn't mean that tomorrow we're gonna go grab somebody off the street and start throwing money at them. Our city's very professional in that kind of way. And so I would like to have the marker in our budget. Again, this is a placeholder so that when they are, when they're able to get it together and they can hire that person, it can happen.
Mr. Matthews.
I'm just concerned we start adding placeholder after placeholder after placeholder. I, I mean, I think it's our responsibility not just to hang all this stuff out here and then try and figure out, well, is it really gonna be in the budget or is it not? We went through the discussion earlier tonight and that's fine. We, we're changing our minds here. But if we're gonna hire someone to do that, then what do we need the committee for?
Ms. Davis.
I just think, you know, I'm going with the FTEs that the staff recommended. People already know how I feel about the FTEs. I think if the staff felt that the position was where we needed to be, I think they would have put it in for this year. So I'm going off of that. I, you know, I think that we have to go with that.
And I mean, I would, I would just echo some of those thoughts. And if we are going to hire someone to direct this board, then we hire somebody part-time and it goes back to a volunteer board that volunteers their time and doesn't have a, an operating budget as a committee as well as hiring somebody.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
I think Mr. Matthews has a good point. Somehow we ought to know what the relationship is between the, the employee and the committee. So I, I don't know exactly who's gonna do that or when, but I think we ought to define that before we, before we hire somebody. What is their relationship? How do they work together?
Mr. Pond.
I hope we can answer all those questions because they're the right questions and they should be answered. So that, that's fine. I will vote for this consensus largely because we've talked about this for longer than I think many people realize and have committed as a group actually previously, maybe not exactly this group, to this exactly. Not, not kind of like this, but to this exactly. So, you know, all I'm doing in, you know, is, is kind of staying, staying to where I've been and where we've been along several, you know, a few years at least. And, and I will vote for that. I don't dismiss any of these questions though because they're all the right questions. I mean, we, we have to, we have to understand the relationship with the committee. We have to understand the relationship to the budget, when it comes on board, what the job description is and how all that works. I hope we could get that through. If, if, if we can't, we can't. But I'm hopeful that we can answer all those questions and, and move forward. So I'll vote for it.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To go along these lines, I think Councilmember Fitzgerald mentioned it earlier with the term orphan in respect to this committee. And that term fits, fits in certain ways because under Mayor Joyce J., this was an ad hoc committee and the work was done and we appreciate all the work they were doing. But until this evening, when you mentioned that in two thousand nineteen you will take steps to authorize this committee, this committee has been operating in a very informal way to this point. So it has not been ratified by the city council and there's been no formal steps taken to define the, the roles and responsibilities and the actual structure of it. And so I would ask us to withhold the discussion of a environmental sustainability coordinator until we have the proper framework in place for this committee to operate, to function. We have that for every other board and commission that we have and who they report to. But in this instance, we've already given twenty-five thousand dollars to an ad hoc committee. And I just, I'd ask us to take a step back and look at how to set this up formally so that it's done in the best way possible and gets us the biggest bang for our buck.
Ms. Hoppy.
I'd like to continue with my consensus and ask for a show of hands.
There is not consensus. Okay, additional discussion on the budget. Mr. Matthews.
I'll ask Mr. Goff my annual question. Could you please reiterate for us any unfunded liabilities that we might have in the coming one to two years? Are we still, do we have, as, for instance, do we still have a shortfall on our Wadsworth project?
We do at this point. We don't have final budget numbers, but through the valley engineering and, and design process, we hope to get a, a final budget number. We're estimating about forty-five million. So that leaves us potentially five million short. We have a plan to apply for more Dr. Cog, Dr. Cog tip funding in, in this next cycle, which would cover that. There's obviously no guarantee we'd get that, but, and, so, yes.
Anything out on, how about on the other, any of the other major projects we've got going, be it out at the Cross, the Intrapet, the Railroad Station, whatever? Are there any potential gotchas?
Unfortunately, no. I mean, there's always, there's always...
That's my point.
There's always more cost to everything, Larry, as you know. You know, fortunately at those projects, we have money to spend through the, the two E-funds. Could we use more money? Yes, for those projects.
Mr. Urban.
I think along the same lines of what Councilmember Matthews said. And I, first I want to say that the presentation you gave tonight was great, Patrick. And I guess one of the things that I saw was you did a great job in describing all the potential future revenue sources that we might run into down the road. But like Mr. Matthews said, that some of those unfunded liabilities or those risks that we just don't, that are un, and I guess that in some respects they're unknown, but at least elucidating some of the possible pitfalls that we see. Obviously, you couldn't foresee Walmart pulling out and, and that's, you know, something that is difficult to predict. But at least providing some sort of forecasting of where things might go wrong. I know that's asking a lot, but I think it would help balance it out to say, these are where we're going to see potential windfalls and this is where we see potential pitfalls. And that's something for next year, I'd like to see an understanding of where might we fall short. And it's not fun to discuss, but I think...
No, and it's a good, good point. And honestly, I had more in last year's budget message because I thought last year we had more pitfalls and I took those out because I think that we are getting much better. That's why I've always supported a healthy reserve, because you never know when Walmart's gonna close. And, you know, actually, our reserve policy is that we target twenty-five percent. Seventeen percent is the minimum. So I'm, I'll always support. And that's, that's best practice. That's recommended by national governmental finance organizations. And I know Mr. Fitzgerald doesn't agree with me, but I, I think having a healthy reserve is, is, helps with those risks, unknown risk.
Thank you, Ms. Dozen.
So I was just, I meant to ask this earlier when we were talking about staffing, but I was looking at some of the personnel services and the increases from this last year to next year. So we have the personnel services under the administrative. So you'll look to page seventy-four. We have an increase of one hundred and sixty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars with only one increase of staffing, staff members, it looks like. So I was just wondering if maybe you could speak to those personnel services, like what, what is included within those costs, as well as the one hundred and one thousand four hundred and twenty dollar increase for the city manager personnel?
The city manager personnel, as you asked earlier, was for, we moved the assistant to the city manager position from admin services over to my budget, city manager's budget. I'm making a few organizational changes with Heather and Carly leaving the new position, which we have hired a position, Mary Anne. She'll be starting October second. She'll be working directly for me and, and she'll be in, under my budget.
Okay.
The HR's budget, there is a little bit increased. We, we had transition in the HR manager. Again, with the competitive, competitive market, we did have to provide a little bit more salary to get the person that we wanted. And then there is an increase, no, there's no increase in HR, right? This next year? Let me see if I can figure out what's... No, she had, no, she's on page seventy-four, I think she's talking about...
Four and four for HR, if that helps.
She's talking about HR, administrative services altogether. What page are we on? Seventy-four?
74. So, I was looking at the personnel services.
Oh, total for admin services.
To propose. And then, I see a jump from 22 authorized employees in 2018 to 23 in 2019.
Yeah. So, again, part of that is the increase in staffing. Part of it is the performance management budget that we, last year, we started budgeting that in each department now. We, again, we budgeted $450,000 for potential performance management increases for employees. And we used to budget that in a central budget. And then, this is the first year that we've, we moved it into there. So, there's an additional 3% on top of their current budget for any potential raises that employees might achieve.
So, is that just in the administrative department or is that in each department?
That's in the administrative services line item. And then, the money is divvied up throughout, throughout the rest of the budgets.
Ms. Davis?
I'd like to make a consensus to approve the proposed 2019 budget with the revisions that we've made. And it does sound, uh-oh, it sounds like Ms. Dozeman has a couple other questions.
I just remembered Ms. Hulteen's ask for, I don't recall the amount, but the Activate 38 program.
I don't know. Did she give a number? I don't remember.
No, I've talked to her a little bit, but I would encourage us to try to reach out and try to get a specific, a specific number. I don't believe that it's, that's a huge amount, but it's to try to take some of the, some of the proposals that have already come up. And she mentioned striping. She mentioned...
Speed boards, striping.
Speed boards, striping. I've got the notes here. One second.
I have it on my notes, too. One more item.
Let's see. Speed checker signs, refresh crossings, and investing in alternative, some alternative routes that are perpendicular to the quarter. So...
Scott, if you remember, the speed boards are about 25 for a pair, $25,000? Is that, is that much?
Yeah.
So, they're under $25,000, I think, for a pair of speed boards, for one from each direction. Striping is, we could probably cover under the $100,000 that we have in CIP budget.
And I mean, I would hate to throw out an arbitrary number right now, you know, if we can get...
We can bring it back during, when...
If you can. If we're comfortable, you know, targeting something like 50, I would like to do that. But otherwise, let's get, let's get something back from her.
Ms. Dozeman?
I would also like to make a consensus to either decrease the amount allocated to the green or remove it from the 2019 budget until we further talks with the district and understand what either the IGA or that kind of agreement would look like. Sorry. What, what? Okay. My apologies. What? Yeah, but my consensus would affect her consensus. So, I would just like to get, gain consensus on either decreasing the amount of the green improvements or holding off on including that in the budget until after we speak to the district.
Just so council understands, we do, we have hired a design team to design a project. Doesn't mean you can't reduce the funds, but... Yep, okay.
Ms. Hoppe?
Again, I, we wouldn't spend that money until we had a plan in place. So, I'll be voting no on this or not voting for this consensus.
Consensus fails. Ms. Davis?
All right. I would like to get a consensus on approving the 2019 proposed budget with already the approved revisions. And it does sound like we'll have to take less from the reserves because we have saved some money with, from the local works budget and also including an amount, should I say, not to exceed a certain amount for Ms. Hulteen's ask? Or should I just say? Okay. So, also with a consideration to a dollar amount based off of Ms. Hulteen's request on the dais tonight.
You just want us to come up with a number? Because we'll need to have, put something in the budget for you to adopt.
Not to exceed $40,000.
All right. Let's see. A show of hands. Well, I was, I wasn't paying attention, so... Okay. The consensus...
Is that a yes?
That's a yes? The consensus gets us to the next order of business. Thank you all very much. Stimulating discussion.
Yeah, thanks.
So, we will move to item number three on our agenda, staff reports.
Quickly, just real quickly, you'll be interested in this, I believe. I received a text this weekend from Denver Transit Partners and they made it through their 21-day testing period. This is kind of cryptic information. Raw data shows SPD, I don't know what that means, target was met today. This subject is to confirmation on Monday. And I got another text. It was confirmed today. So, and I asked what the next steps are. I believe the next steps are FRA and Colorado PUC approval. So, hopefully, that's not a very long process, but hopefully, I'll have more information. But it sounds like they made it through that 21-day testing period. Stop, okay. Yep.
Okay. Any other staff reports? Staff is, staff is moving, staff is moving the other way. What do they know that we don't? All right. We have then, we'll go to elected officials' reports. Who would like to give a long report? Anybody came with a, with a presentation? Okay. I believe we have no more business to conduct. Or Ms. Dozeman?
Yeah. I just want to give a huge shout-out to Wheat Ridge High School for putting on the Farmer's 5,000. Christie Davis and I ran, more like jogged. I got fifth in my division, which I was really surprised about. This was my first 5K, but it is only thanks to Christie and her sister Nikki pushing me for my first 5K. So, I just wanted to thank the community for coming out and supporting that event. It was their 38th annual. It was pretty hot this year, but I look forward to seeing all of you next year, either as a volunteer or as a run walker.
Do the rules allow you to be pushed? I think we need to talk to the judges on that. All right. We will stand adjourned. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
All right, Janelle, you have something? Better speak up.
I, no, it's short. I just want to do, encourage all of the council people and anybody that is listening on television, please RSVP for the boards and commissions dinner so that we can get numbers. Please do it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pond.
One more thing, and I'm sorry because we did get this message from the clerk on Nancy Snow's passing. And I know that the arrangements for whatever is going to happen have not come out yet, but obviously Nancy, she's done this body more than once, planning commission and election commission as a standing member. So, anyway, just that notice. And I think we'll have more information coming out as it moves forward.
Yeah. Michael, our son, called this morning and yeah, they're looking for a couple weeks out still for services.
Thank you. We will stand adjourned. Thank you.